Good afternoon. I would like to call to order the Board of the Falmouth Selectment Meeting. It is March 27, 2023 at 2:00. And I would ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask that you please silence your cellphones. And if anyone in the audience is either video or audio recording this open session meeting, I ask that you notify me as the Chair. No, thank you. And the purpose of the meeting this afternoon is to interview our three finalists for the position of Town Manager. I will not be accepting public comment at this meeting. So we will begin with Peter Johnson Staub. And I'm going to remind the Board that we are going to keep the interviews to a limit of 45 minutes to one hour, and I will hold you to that. So we will start with Mr. Zalinski.
Good afternoon. Mr. Johnson Staub, how will you spend your first six months in Falmouth? And explain what your strategy will be on how you plan on implementing it. Please provide some thoughtful detail while being concise.
So in my first six months, one of my top priorities is going to be hiring an assistant Town Manager, because that's critical for me and my office to perform and meet the Board's expectations and the community's expectations. So I will start that immediately and make that a priority. At the same time, I will continue to do as I have been doing, which is to move forward on all fronts as best I can. So right now, we're heading into Town Meeting. I'll be preparing for that, making sure that I and the Board are well-prepared for what we are looking ahead to for the Town Meeting, followed by the override vote. And I have, as you know, we are in the middle of a police chief search, so that's certainly going to be a priority for me in the next couple of months. And, you know, we have a workshop session on Saturday to talk about some policy issues, and I think that's going to be followed up by another workshop meeting. The Chair and I have talked about needing to check in regularly on progress towards the goals that the Board has set in strategic planning. So that's certainly going to be a priority for me. And then continuing to work with the Human Resources Director to fill vacancies that we have and to support her as she's new in her role in keeping up with the high-priority positions and other human resources work that we have there. And then, you know, that quickly gears up to the capital planning cycle. So we'll be working with the department heads to solicit their capital requests, looking at what we can afford, looking at what we really need to do, and preparing for the November Town Meeting.
That's a great segue into my second question. How often do you plan on meeting with your department heads?
So it will be different depending on which department head we're speaking of. I've been meeting with all of them as a group once a month, and I have been meeting with some of them biweekly, and some of them monthly, and some of them irregularly. So, and that, my answer there will change depending on, you know, initially, when I don't have an assistant Town Manager, that's one of the areas where, once we're fully staffed, and even after that assistant Town Manager has been acclimated somewhat to the local environment and the responsibilities of the job, one of the things I look forward to that will free up my time is to spend more time with department heads and frankly, more time with you individually as members of the Board.
Finally, just a simple question. What do you do day one?
What do I do day one?
What happens day one? What is your first thing you do when you come out of your office on day one?
I think it's business as usual. You know, I've been doing this work, obviously, for, you know, what is it, nine months now? And, you know, I look forward to sort of repositioning myself with respect to the department heads. They have been terrific and supportive, but there's, you know, there's a slightly different approach when you're a short-term interim manager versus, you know, a full-time permanent. And so, you know, I look forward to working more closely with them and setting goals with them and holding them accountable for those goals.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Scott Price.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Johnson Staub, could you please describe your understanding of the culture of Falmouth in your own words?
My understanding of the culture of Falmouth? That's an interesting, open-ended question.
It is.
So I would start by saying it is a, it's the most highly engaged community that I've worked for, and I've worked for four, including some other pretty highly engaged communities. And that's, you know, impactful in terms of the work that I do and that you do as Board members. So that's sort of the first thing that comes to my mind. The next thing that comes to my mind is diverse, and I say that in the sense of politically and economically. It is very diverse. You know, we have, we have people at very modest means who have been on Cape Cod for generations and didn't have to pay $700,000 for a house, and we have people who have recently paid $1 million in cash for a house. We have a Woods Hole community which is science-based and, you know, highly educated, and we have landscapers and tradespeople. So it is, it's a diverse community, and politically as well. You know, we have a lot of very progressive residents, and we have a lot of very conservative residents.
Thank you. Got to follow up on that. Could you comment on your understanding of the needs of an aging population?
Sure. So, you know, there are many. The, you know, I'm really pleased to have the wonderful new asset that we have with the Senior Center, and I think they do a great job of addressing a lot of those needs. And there, you know, it's a range from social, physical, health insurance, tax, tax returns, social work, you know, it's a real range of recreational to more, you know, meeting the, the needs of a high-need population. So with the elderly, you know, beyond the Senior Center, there are needs that seniors have in terms of support services. You know, it's one of the, one of the challenges that we face as, I believe it's about a third of the, of the Town of Falmouth is over the age of 65, and that trend is increasing. So being able to meet the healthcare and service needs of that population as housing costs rise is going to be a challenge.
Thank you. Can you comment on your experience making a community, a workplace, et cetera, more equitable and inclusive?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's something that, that I'm very interested in, that I've done some reading on. And, you know, I think it's, it's a lot easier to talk about than it is to accomplish. I've spent a lot of time talking to some knowledgeable people in the field about the diversity, equity, and inclusion officer job description to get their ideas and their expertise in terms of how we should shape that job description and what that process might look like. It definitely needs buy-in from the top, from the Town Manager and the Select Board. So I certainly look forward to making that a priority for me to communicate to the staff and the community. And I really think it's, it's going to be a process that starts ground up with the DEI officer leading the development of a strategic plan. So to survey the community, understand the community, what are, you know, what is our knowledge, what are our areas of strength, what are our areas of weakness, and then working with that DEI officer to develop and implement a strategic plan to help us be more centered on how we incorporate the perspective of diversity, equity, and inclusion in everything that the town does.
Thank you. My final question. The town has a local comprehensive plan, and annually, the Select Board advises a shorter-term strategic plan. Please articulate your vision for Falmouth as it aligns with those plans, and if it does not align, where does it differ and why?
So that's, you know, it's interesting. The local comprehensive plan is really a land use plan, and the Select Board strategic plan is more of an operational plan. So they, they definitely intersect, but they're very different. And I guess the first thing I would have to say in terms of how my vision aligns with either of those is that the Town Manager has a role in creating a vision for the town, but it's not, you know, it's not for me to have a vision for the town, right? So my role in helping is to work with the Board in a dialogue to support you with analysis and recommendations and information to craft a vision. But it's not, you know, you're the elected representatives, and you are responsible to your constituents. So it's not for the Town Manager to unilaterally, in my view, have a vision for the town. But certainly, that is, that's one of the elements of the job that I enjoy the most, is the policy-level work in doing strategic planning, envisioning, and having that dialogue where I'm providing you with information and analysis to assist you in arriving in that vision.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Well, my first question is really geared towards the other two candidates because it's, as you'll see, I'm going to read the whole thing. I was going to skip part of it, but I'm just going to go ahead. How did you prepare for this interview? Did you visit the town? I know you did. If you didn't visit, why not? And if you did, did you meet with anyone? And what material did you review? And what can you tell me about Falmouth from your search? So you'll have to modify that to your own experience.
Sure. I've, you know, I've been learning about Falmouth since I arrived six years ago, and I've been speaking to, you know, each of you on a periodic basis about the role and your expectations for it and, and how I'm doing so far as, as interim Town Manager. And I, you know, I speak with staff members, obviously, on a regular basis, and I speak with community members on a regular basis. It's not necessarily a huge number every day, but I do, you know, every week, I'm interacting on some level with community members. So I'm, I'm trying to, you know, learn and understand from that process. You know, I certainly have become very familiar with the Charter. I'm familiar with what the community, the issues that the community members raised at the forum that you held to get input on the Town Manager selection process. That was part of my preparation. And then part of, you know, part of my preparation was really preparing, you know, myself and thinking about what I need to do to prepare to succeed in this role and how I can, how I can, how I can prepare myself so that I can meet your expectations and hopefully exceed your expectations.
The next question is, please explain the importance of attracting, developing, and maintaining a professional and stable workforce that provides quality public services to the community. I have three parts, but I'll let you start with that, and then I'll ask the other three parts if I could.
Well, it's, you know, it's hugely important. It's very helpful to have a workforce that has longevity and institutional knowledge of the community. That said, you know, it's, it's obvious why you're asking the question, because it is a challenge for this municipality, and it's a challenge in general for the region workforce, retaining and recruiting the talented help that we need to be effective. There are large economic forces at play, and there are internal, you know, cultural forces at play as well. So, you know, is it important? It's, you know, it's absolutely important. In an ideal situation, you know, we're an attractive employer, and people want to be here, so we have lots of qualified people who apply. We're able to select them on a group of highly talented people, and they enjoy it here, and they stay for a long time so that they can be really effective.
So the other parts of this question is, can you identify the elements essential to accomplishing this goal and how you would implement this in the Town of Falmouth? Should I read all the three parts, or?
Sure.
That's part A. Part B is, how would you sell the costs and benefits of increased services to the public considering the financial issues facing the town, and considering that it relies on 1.6 million of non-recurring revenue to fund its operating expenses, and does not have a dedicated and recurring revenue source outside of debt to fund capital expenditures? And the last part is, what's the value of maintaining a competitive wage and benefit package for Town employees, and how do you successfully sell this concept to the taxpayers of the community?
Okay, so the, the first question was, was wage, was?
It's how do you identify, can you identify the elements essential to accomplish this goal and how you would implement this in the Town of Falmouth?
Okay. So, so that certainly connects to your last question about the cost-benefit of the wage package. So again, you know, one of the things that I would highlight is it's a challenge that we need to address and that we need to work on, the workforce challenge. We, we do need to understand that there are larger economic forces that we're not going to solve, right? The cost of housing, the, the size, the, the number of people in the workforce in this region is something that, that, you know, we're not going to radically change. It relates to some of the work that we're doing with affordable housing, but there, you know, there are, there is an element of this that's going to be very difficult to quote-unquote "solve." However, obviously, there are things that we can do and that we need to do. One of them is to have a competitive wage and benefit package, as you said. How, you know, how can we sell that? My hope would be that we make it a priority to pay competitive wages and benefits without a tax increase, so that there, there still, you know, there still may be trade-offs that we need to talk about publicly with, with the Board, with Town Meeting, where there may be other things that we can't do because we are prioritizing wage and benefits for a competitive workforce. And, you know, I think it's, it's the Town Manager's obligation to sort of illustrate, you know, A, that we're in the right place in terms of what we're paying for wages and benefits, and B, you know, what the impact is if we, if we don't have those competitive wage and benefits.
Thank you. My final question is, can you describe your method of developing a cooperative team approach among Town employees? Please explain how you would do this with department heads as well as the rank-and-file.
Sure. So, you know, a lot of it, you know, starting with the department heads is about having a relationship, you know? So you need to spend the time to communicate with them, to get to know them, to develop a rapport. So I think that's, that's a really big part of it. My approach is certainly one to emphasize positive, not negative. You know, what can I do to support you to be more successful? How can I help you understand, you know, what the priorities are and how we, you know, we can align the work that your department is doing with the strategic plan and the priorities of the Select Board? And, you know, I spend a lot of time at work, and so do the department heads, so part of it is looking for ways to have some fun while you're doing it. And then the rank-and-file, it's a similar answer, I guess. You know, I have less FaceTime, and, you know, I'd love to say that I would, I'm going to have a lot of FaceTime with every single employee, but that's not realistic. I, you know, within Town Hall, I have more opportunity for FaceTime with, with employees. But certainly, you know, we need to be looking as, as managers, we need to be looking to something of a cultural shift where we, we need to look at employees as a really valued asset and to be really appreciative that they're willing to come and work, whereas, you know, maybe 50 years ago, the traditional attitude was, you're lucky to have a job, you do as I say. You know, we, in, in the modern era, if we want to be successful in, in having a motivated workforce, you know, we need to be employee-friendly, and we need to be really respectful and look for ways to build that camaraderie. That's it for me.
Mr. Patterson?
You've obviously been following the newspaper. What do you consider to be the top three issues facing Falmouth?
Great question. And it's, it's one I'm gonna, I'm gonna struggle to answer because there are maybe just a hair more than, than three. So I'll try to cheat by saying that there are three interrelated issues that are among, individually, among the most important, and we've touched on them already. One of them is affordability. We have an affordability crisis in Falmouth. The average single-family home sells for over $700,000. So, you know, we're no longer talking about how can we make it affordable to an individual or a household that is earning 80% or 30% of the area median income. We're talking about how can we make it affordable for two, you know, a household that has two professionals in it? Because, you know, with a, with a household income of $200,000, it's still not easy to afford a $700,000 home. So that issue is, is a big one, and it interconnects with workforce. That cost of, that affordability crisis affects local businesses and their ability to, to fill their positions. It affects the municipality and our ability to fill our positions. And the solution, one, one of the, one of the solutions, one of the related issues in terms of boosting housing production is wastewater. We are, as you know, pursuing a multi-decade, multi-pronged approach to addressing water quality issues that is not limited to sewer expansion, but it does include sewer expansion. And bringing sewers to areas where, under the local comprehensive plan, we really want to have multifamily housing is one of the solutions to mitigate affordable housing. And conversely, the lack of sewers in some neighborhoods is an impediment to building the housing stock that we need, both private market-rate housing and subsidized affordable housing. So that's a, a group of interrelated issues that are among the, the most important. And if you'll allow me one more, I would say the, you know, the existential, immediate and long-term threat of sea level rise and coastal resilience.
How do you, how do you motivate employees to achieve more and to suggest innovative ways to perform routine, day-to-day operations? And part of that is how do you build morale?
Yeah. So we, you know, it, it starts with, you know, part of what I think employees want to come to work and have a purpose. And, you know, there's literature that supports that certainly pay is important, and appreciation is important. But also, if someone's coming to work every day and they, they don't feel like what they're doing is making a difference or worthwhile, that is very demotivating. And conversely, if we can engage the employees in helping to set goals and priorities and also understanding goals and priorities that the community has set, and build their understanding of how they can be a part of, of meeting those goals and addressing those goals, I think that can be a real motivating factor. But we, you know, we need to look at multiple strategies, as, as I have alluded to, in terms of the culture, an appreciative culture, a culture that rewards good work, and a culture that provides support and training to help put our staff in a position to succeed.
Explain how honest communications, honor, and integrity relate to developing a quality working relationship with the public, with committees and Town employees, and provide an example, if you can, of each of these constituencies in which your honesty, integrity may have hurt or embarrassed them on a short-term basis, and how you try to repair that.
So, you know, I think it is an essential, it's essential for a Town Manager to be effective to be honest and to be perceived as someone who has integrity. And there are going to be misunderstandings that arise from time to time, more frequently disagreements just on policy matters. Hopefully, folks can separate out the difference between an honest disagreement and, and disingenuousness. You know, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to come up with an example. I certainly pride myself on my integrity, and I think I'm known as a straight shooter. I don't know that I've, that I've, you know, damaged my reputation or, or hurt the community by having a shortfall in that area.
Okay, my turn. What have you learned about this current Select Board? And what do you think will be your biggest challenges in working with this Board? And lastly, how would you facilitate conflict between Board members?
So one of the things that I've learned is that the Board wants much better support on policy decisions. And by that, I mean, you want good research and analysis and information, and in many cases, you want recommendations. You don't want the Town Manager to just, you know, tell the Board that it's a policy issue, they just need to decide. That's, you know, I've heard that loud and clear, and I certainly, you know, as I mentioned, that is an area that I really enjoy, which is doing the research and analysis and marginalizing the resources of the staff to bring that information to the Board so that we can frame the questions for you and help you arrive at policy decisions. So I think that's one of the things that I've heard from the Board. Similarly, on, you know, there are certain more really operational issues that, that are under the jurisdiction of the Select Board, and I know you want to rely on the Town Manager to have done the, the staff review so that what's brought to you has been vetted, and you don't need to spend time checking administrative sort of work. You want to be able to rely on the Manager to get the simple stuff done so that you can focus on higher-level policy priority work. So you asked about how do I manage conflict within the Board?
Yes, and your biggest challenge in working with the current Board. Those are the other two parts of the question.
Yeah. So let me, let me address the conflict question first. One of the, you know, I, I mentioned when I, I've been, obviously, in the interim role, and so you've got pretty good insight as to how I operate for the most part. But what you haven't seen is how I would like to operate when fully staffed. And one of the changes, one of, one of the ways that I want to, to use that time when I have an assistant that I can rely upon, is to spend more time with each of you individually. Because I think part of managing conflict potentially is understanding where each of the Board members are coming from on certain sensitive matters, and then trying to, you know, navigate a way to, to avoid misunderstandings, to, to bring information forward to help build consensus, and to, you know, brainstorm with the Chair. You know, how can we, you know, how can we mitigate this conflict? Obviously, we need to be careful about the open meeting law, so I'm not going to be, you know, relaying detailed information that I get from one member to, to a quorum.
Okay. And this goes right along with it. How do you build consensus among the Board, your employees, and the citizens of Falmouth?
So I think it's, you know, it's about, it's about communication, and that sounds really simple, but it's, it again comes back to strategic planning, right? So it's, it's having a purpose. It's setting goals. It's understanding what the priority goals are, why those are the priority goals, how the work of the departments fit into those priority goals, what are the expectations. And not all of it is going to fit, right? I mean, there's just some day-to-day operational work that is assumed is going to happen, and it's not directly related to the strategic plan or, or policy priorities. But even there, you know, to develop consensus is about understanding, okay, what is it, what is it that they're needing to accomplish? Do they have the resources needed to accomplish it? What, what are the disconnects? If, you know, if there's disappointment, whether it's from citizens or Board members or from the Town Manager, you know, my role is not to just find fault and blame and move on, right? My role is to, is to seek to understand. My role is to, you know, to seek to understand, to build understanding, to provide support and resources to close that gap. And sometimes, closing the gap means going to the Select Board and saying, you know, I know you want X, Y, and Z to happen faster, but, you know, I need to defend the departments because they don't have the resources to, to make it happen faster. I think the Board has generally been reasonable on those issues, but that's a challenge with the dynamic of any Town Manager and Select Board is managing those expectations. You know, we want to always say- You know, we want to always say yes, but part of the role of the, of the town manager is to be the voice of, to be the expert on capacity and to be able to say no to the select board when the desires and expectations outstrip the available resources.
So we have spent this entire time with you answering our questions. It's your turn now to talk to us about you. And what it is you would like us to know about you, about your past experience, about where you see yourself in the next five years?
Well, so first of all, I guess I just, I didn't really get a chance to, to thank you for the opportunity for considering me as a finalist. And, you know, I, I guess I want to start by saying that, you know, I, I don't need to tell you that Falmouth is a wonderful community that boasts many assets. The downtown is the envy of the region, a local economy that includes tourism-based businesses, but also the scientific organizations of Woods Hole and healthcare and many trade and service economies as well. And then, of course, the, the heart and soul of Falmouth's character is the beaches and the waterfront. But as you know, this community is facing some very difficult challenges that will require careful study, community engagement, and focused leadership to address. I believe I have the knowledge, experience and, and ex, knowledge, experience and skill set to be an excellent fit for you as your next town manager. And I'll offer four reasons in support of that. First, the depth and quality of my experience, municipal experience. I have 27 years of municipal experience in four communities, all in Massachusetts, all with a year-round population over 21,000. Twenty-two of those years have been on Cape Cod, including Falmouth and Yarmouth combined. And one of the things that I want to, to express is that I feel that my extended time as an assistant town manager has been an incredible learning opportunity because I've had the opportunity to work for and learn from five seasoned town managers. Of course, no town manager is going to get everything right and each town manager is going to have their own style. So part of that learning process has been learning what I would do differently than the managers that I've served. And I, I do want to also point out, just in terms of the basics of my experience, that I have over two years as acting town manager in Falmouth and Yarmouth combined. Working for Falmouth for six years has given me a foundation of knowledge that will enable me to hit the ground running. I have a good understanding of such issues as affordability, workforce shortages, water quality, threats to coastal resources, public safety, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. I have a working knowledge of strategies to address these concerns and a lot to learn as well. I also recognize that I have much to learn about Falmouth itself. I, you know, I, I can hit the ground running, I have six years' experience working here, but I haven't lived here my whole life and I haven't had lengthy conversations with everyone who lives here. So there is still a lot that I have to learn. I would say that my wife and I are both very fond of Falmouth and we would look forward to moving here, should I be fortunate enough to receive the appointment. And living here would certainly give me a more opportunity to learn about Falmouth and its residents and its concerns. I touched on this before, but one of the key elements for the town manager's role is to support the select board in making policy decisions. I know the board seeks better information and analysis on policy decisions than it has received in the recent past. This is one of the elements of the work that I enjoy the most and I think I've demonstrated an ability to deliver on that. Even though short-staffed without a finance director or a human resources director, we carved out the time to have three strategic planning work, workshops. I solicited specific input on budget priorities, I incorporated those priorities into the budget. And, and we also tackled another very difficult issue, which, not, not to say that we've solved it, but you, you have seen, I think, my ability to take an issue like fire staffing, a complicated, difficult, challenging, politically-charged issue. And I spent quite a bit of time and provided analysis and information that I believe put the board in a really good position to be able to make informed decisions. And that's the kind of, of work product that you can expect from me in the future. I also understand that this board wants the town manager to facilitate progress on, on the strategic plan, meaning not just creating the plan, but actually then implementing the plan. And one of the advantages that I have is that, over the six years that I've been here, I've developed strong working relationships with the department heads that I can draw upon to continue to deliver and improve on delivering on those goals, those policy goals that the board has set. Finally, you know my temperament, you know my professionalism and my commitment to the work. I'm direct and I don't always agree with my department heads and I won't always agree with each of you. But I have a great respect for the form of government and you can rely upon me to deliver on the select board's votes. I am calm and professional and have demonstrated an ability to earn the respect of staff and the community. If given the opportunity, I assure you I will work hard to understand the desires and the goals of each individual board member and to translate select board votes into tangible action.
Any questions or follow-up questions or comments from the board? Mr. Patterson?
Really, what I would like to ask about is our education department. You know, state law gives us certain authorities and separates us. But when I came onto the select board nine years ago, I felt like there wasn't enough priority being placed on funding the education department. And I just wanted to find out where you fit in terms of how you balance, you know, the revenues that the town gets, it has to invest, you know, the infrastructure and the operations of the town versus the educational needs of, of the youth in this community and adults too, for that matter.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I add that to my list of questions?
Follow-ups? Yes, Mr. Patterson.
So I, I think the best way for me to answer that question is that I, I need to spend some time with the school superintendent and the school finance director to understand their, their needs, their, their budget, their finances and their needs. Because there isn't going to be, you know, you know, the answer one year is going to be different from the next year. The, you know, like many fields, the educational world is shifting pretty significantly in the sense that, for example, the school age population is steadily dropping. And yet the, the num, the portion of this school age population that is high needs, measured in a variety of different ways, has increased greatly. So the cost per student has risen. And so how does all of that shake out and what are the, you know, what is the resulting budget needs? I guess all I can say, you know, specifically is that from my communication with the school superintendent, I feel very good about their current FY23 budget and I know they're very satisfied with the FY24 budget that we have proposed. And it does include a significant increase for the town, as you know, Sam, an additional $500,000 from rooms excise tax.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Johnson-Stubb, do you feel like there's any fence mending that needs to be done from any interactions with staff or department heads that you may have had in your previous role as assistant town manager where there may have been budget decisions or some type of management decisions that were maybe seen as unfavorable? Do you feel like there's any repair work that needs to be done for relationships or? I guess that's, that's the question.
Yeah. You know, there's always a tension, right, between, between department heads and town manager, between supervisors and supervisees. And the town manager has to make difficult choices because, you know, there are legitimate budget needs in many departments that we're not able to fund. So that's absolutely an, an ongoing challenge. And I, you know, I try to explain and I try to have a process where the departments can understand the decision. But at the end of the day, there, you know, there are difficult judgment calls to make and, you know, some departments, you know, are going to be, you know, not, not thrilled perhaps with the decision. And, you know, all I can do is continue to communicate and make sure that that relationship is sound, that, again, that we have good expectations in terms of, are we out of alignment in, in terms of the resources they have and what is being asked, what they're being asked to deliver with those resources?
If I could just add a clarifying remark?
Yes.
So I'm thinking in terms of when there are budget decisions that are difficult. It's my understanding that in the past, sometimes those decisions were not communicated effectively to some department heads and they found out somewhat after the fact about their, their budget shortfalls and their disappointment was a bit frustrating. So I wonder if you can just elaborate a little bit on how you might, say, share the bad news.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that has been an issue in the past. It has been, you know, pretty highly centralized. And, you know, I hope that the departments have perceived a shift in terms of, I want them to be more involved in the budgeting process. And I would specifically cite that I, I asked for all of the departments to identify their needs beyond a level service budget. They hadn't been asked to do that in a decade. Now, most of them were not funded and I told them upfront, most of them would not be funded. But it is a part of the process that I need to, to go through to understand, to survey what the needs are and to put together a long-range plan to figure out, you know, which of those we might be able to meet and when. So yeah, I, you know, if, if you're talking about the history of budgeting in, in the recent years, prior administration, yeah, I definitely want to set the bar higher in terms of communication. Thank you.
May I add to that? So I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So when you ask them for their budget, knowing full well that it, it may not be funded and you're not asking for a level budget, you're using that information to, to plan five years out? Because they're basically telling you what they need moving forward, even though it may not be funded in the very next budget. Is that correct?
More or less. Can I just elaborate?
Yes, please.
So first of all, I just want to clarify that I asked for discreetly two things. I asked for a level service budget and then I asked separately to identify budget priority needs that were outside of a level, a level service, level-funded budget. Or it was a guideline of, of 2.3%. And yes, I was, I was asking because I, I wanted to know what they saw as their needs because it had been so long. And it was with two things in mind. It was, one, maybe there are a couple of things that we can incorporate into the FY24 budget, which we did, but also with an eye to the long-term, right? What are some of the other things, you know, give me the whole, give me the whole thing so that I have a long, longer-term view. And I'll ask again to update the plan next year. But yeah, I think it's, I think it's important for me and the finance director and the board to have a longer-term view of what the departments perceive their needs are outside of what we're able to provide.
And to continue to consider those needs moving forward in budget development. Thank you.
Exactly.
Mr. Johnson-Stubb, I, I want to dovetail a little bit off of Mr. Brown's question. I don't think I succinctly understood the initial part of that question about the fences that have to be met, amended. Do you have any examples of any that you've created or has been created that you think you need to mend going forward?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I do. I mean, I, I can think of one example and I'm not going to name the department head who, who had a, a desire for an additional staff and, and was disappointed not to get it. And, you know, we talked about it and I think, you know, I, I think we have a good rapport and I think we have mutual respect.
There's only one case that you can remember.
You know, there's, there's more than one that didn't get staff, you know, didn't get a, a budget increase that they were hoping for. There was only one that expressed any dissatisfaction to me that I know of.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other follow-up questions? Comments?
I might have one. I can go back to the house.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I, you asked a question that I, I don't think I ever got around to answering, which is, what do I think is the most difficult challenge, going to be the most difficult challenge for me in meeting your expectations? Did I recall the question correctly?
All right. What do you think will be your biggest challenge working with this board?
Working with this board? I think the biggest challenge working with this board, and I don't, you know, I, I don't say this sort of specifically relative to, to particular interactions that we've had, but I think the biggest challenge of the job is volume. There is just a lot to do and a lot that the town manager is responsible for. And part of my role is triage, priority setting, what are the things that I absolutely have to make time to do and what are some things that I'm just not going to be able to get to? And understandably, you should be setting expectations high. You should be very demanding of the town manager. So I, I think the most difficult aspect is going to be, you know, having a mutual understanding of where that line is and what are the, what are the right things to focus on and what's the right amount of volume that you can reasonably expect to get done.
So let me just follow up and it, it goes back to my previous questions. What happens when you and the board disagree on the priorities? How do you manage that?
You know, with, with dialogue and, you know, hopefully, a, a big part of that, again, is spending the time one-on-one so that we have a rapport, we have a relationship and we're communicating. And where we disagree, at least we understand, you know, we understand why and we have a mutual respect that overarches that disagreement.
Thank you. Ms. Scott Price?
Do you have a follow-up?
No, I don't think I do.
It's loud.
No, I got to it. But actually, some of these kind of follow-up things were answered in, in other questions. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. And is there anything that you would like to ask this board?
I would be interested to hear what you think my, my greatest strengths and areas for growth are.
Mr. Brown?
I would say your greatest strength, and I've admired it since like your second week on the job, is giving a direct, concise, honest answer, even if it's not exactly what I want to hear, it's what I need to hear. And if, if somebody just tells me, oh, yeah, yeah, sure, you know, then I'm getting nowhere. But if I get a straight answer that tells me that I might be on the wrong path, I think about it and, you know, makes me rethink my position or maybe enhance it, but at least I've got something to go on. I think that's really important.
Any comments? Mr. Patterson?
Sure, I, I guess I could say, of the strengths, I've always been impressed with your ability to communicate with town meeting. I always felt like your, your explanations, deliberations that you create are always direct and clear and lucid. So that's impressed me a lot. If you have a weakness, you're not very photogenic.
But he takes criticism well.
Obviously.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd say a, a great strength is your knowledge of Falmouth and all of the, the pieces of how Falmouth work. Obviously, in your position, you've done, especially in the last few months, you've done a lot of those positions. So I think a strength that you have is that you are fairly knowledgeable in those and that you, I think you've done most of those pretty well.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I've identified one weakness, he's not a very good baseball thrower.
That's fair.
Into the opening of the Commodores game.
I almost fell down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I do think that spending more time with the board, it might be a weakness and understanding where certain board members, how they feel about certain initiatives or certain goals. I, I think you could work on that.
Thank you.
I think the other piece that I would say is a challenge is trying to keep really active listening at your forefront all the time and taking the time to listen, step back, take a breath, and rejoin the conversation. Anything? Anything else from the board? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the board will break for ten minutes.
Okay.
I'd like to call back to order the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is three o'clock and we have our second interviewee. Welcome, Mr. Renshaw.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
And we are going to start right off with questions and we will give you an opportunity to wrap up at the end. And I would like to begin with Mr. Zelensky and I will remind the board that we will keep the interview to forty-five minutes to an hour as needed.
Mr. Renshaw, good afternoon. Thank you for coming.
Good afternoon, sir.
My first question is, how will you spend the first six months in Falmouth? Explain what your strategy will be and how you will plan on implementing your strategy. Please provide with some thoughtful detail while being somewhat concise.
Thank you. The first six months, such a critical period for a new manager. My first, my first goal would be to begin meeting with the department heads. One of my passions is working with, in terms of the organizational structure, working with staff, developing staff. In order to do that, ultimately, I feel as the manager, I need to have a good understanding of what the, what the challenges are, what the resources, resource challenges are, the limitations, strengths, weaknesses, that sort of thing. So the first six months, well, the first couple of months I would spend in conversations, individually and as a group with the department heads. I feel it's important to give folks an opportunity to kind of explain to me from their perspective because each person has a unique perspective, kind of what the challenges are in the departments. That'll allow me to get up to speed pretty quickly and I've been successful in all of the organizations that I've managed with that kind of overall strategy. First meeting with the staff, the department heads, and understanding kind of what those challenges are. And I mentioned the, the passion that I have for organizational development and kind of drilling down and understanding in a great level of detail what, what the needs are in terms of growing the organization. I call it moving the needle forward, making sure that you have a plan in place as a manager to identify those, those weaknesses and enhance upon the strengths. One of the things that I would be interested in implementing is an initiative that I'm doing right now. Employee engagement is important in any organization and surveying, kind of taking the pulse of the organization, I think is critically important as well. So within that six-month period, I would propose an employee engagement survey process that would kind of allow me to, to better understand what those, what those challenges are from an entire organization perspective, spread across, the ones that I've done in the past and I've got a really strong template, are spread across ten different dimensions or characteristics, management strengths, weaknesses. It's really about communication, how's the communication flow up and down throughout the organization going? It's really a way for a manager, again, to, to understand what's working, what's not. I typically say the good, bad, and the ugly. You want to know it all and you need to be able to act on the ugly as quickly as possible.
Thank you. What will be the frequency? How often will you meet with your department heads once you're up to speed?
So what I've done, what I currently do and have done for the past several years, my first, and again, probably within that first six months, it would be weekly meetings. I feel as a new manager, trying to get quickly up to speed as possible, weekly meetings. After about the first six months, I've typically started to scale that down to bi-weekly. The organization I'm currently managing, we meet bi-weekly with the department heads. I have eleven direct reports that reports to me as department heads. We meet bi-weekly. I also do part of that process, I'm a huge proponent of ladder up and ladder down communication. Ladder up is probably, in my opinion, more important, getting information from the boots on the ground, so to speak, the line-level staff, up through the department heads and then ultimately to me as the manager. The ladder down approach is basically me disseminating and distributing information from the board, from the governing body, down to the department heads, and I encourage them to meet with their staff routinely as well, whether it's weekly or bi-weekly so that there's that. I think the dialogue and communication is always important and having that free flow.
Thank you. And the last one's pretty, pretty basic. What do you do day one? You get the job, you hang your, your name on the office. What do you do the first day?
So, so day one, I love, I use the mantra, managing by walking around. I'm not a micromanager, but day one, and I've enjoyed the few days that I've been here so far, just being able to walk around the town and get a better feel. But day one would involve me, again, walking around, meeting people, introducing myself. I, I talked about my passion for engaging with staff. I think that's really, really important, beginning day one, being able to interact and meet people and so that they can put a face to my name and vice versa.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Scott Price?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Renshaw, could you please describe your understanding of the culture of Falmouth in your own words?
The culture, wonderfully diverse, just amazingly engaged and active, just a collection of, a collection of really special villages. I had a chance, an opportunity this morning to visit and tour Woods Hole and I know the other seven are just equally as amazing. The diversity and the level of engagement in Falmouth, from what I've been able to just perceive over the past forty-eight hours, literally, is just really exciting to me. I'm really energized by the fact, because I love my, I love working in communities and managing communities where the citizenry, the public are, is engaged. To think is a, is a potential candidate for the Falmouth Town Manager position, that you've got at least thirty-four, thirty-five committees, boards, commissions that are staffed by volunteers and that, just that spirit of volunteerism is really, really exciting to me. Over the course of my career, I've had a chance to manage from 2011 to 2016 in a coastal community, but I think each one of those coastal communities, each coastal community is neat, is unique. The seasonal kind of, you know, ebb and flow as tourists come in to a community, sometimes wearing threadbare, so the patience of folks as traffic picks up and ramps up. I think as a coastal manager, it's important to have that, that ability to kind of, the public information and public education, kind of pass things up and down throughout the community. So just that uniqueness of, again, being, being a very special coastal community that has the challenges, public safety and other, and other ways, challenges, I think is, is very unique and special. Just, I think the demographics and all of the different issues, based upon my read of the strategic plan that the select board is working on, just that, that breadth and depth of the challenges and issues is exciting to me. Not that I have ever been bored in any other organization that I've managed, but I think this is an opportunity that would excite any potential manager to come into Falmouth.
Thank you. Could you comment a little bit on your understanding of the needs of an aging population?
I had the opportunity to work in a special district in Highlands Ranch, Colorado, for about a year and a half. So it wasn't a long term, but it was, it was a great experience for me. I had never managed a special district before and when that challenge was offered to me and made available, I was really intrigued by it. Highlands Ranch is a large, one-hundred-and-five-thousand-population master plan community. It was developed forty years ago, so not the three and a half centuries of history and experience that, that the town here has. But again, very unique and special and one of the issues and one of the similarities and parallels between that experience in Highlands Ranch, we were building, when I was there, I led the design and construction efforts of about a sixteen-million-dollar senior center. And that was significant, but I think more significantly was the fact, what drove that. It was about a five-year process before I had arrived in 2021. The planning stages of it and showing the demographics, it wasn't, there was not a hundred percent consensus within the community that a senior center was needed, they didn't have one. But working with the, the Board of Directors, I had a seven-member elected governing body Board of Directors, showing the, the transition and the change in the demographics from one census to the next, very similar. The population was about thirty-three percent over the age of sixty-five in Highlands Ranch, so I think yearly similar to here in Falmouth. So having been able to kind of work through that process of the design of that center, making sure that you have identified the resources that are going to be needed, transportation, moving seniors from one program, one activity to the next. So getting a good understanding of that in my time that I spent in Highlands Ranch, as well as the other counties that I've managed throughout my thirteen-year career in city-county management, working with the senior population. It's always, it's always a pleasure of mine to visit and participate in a lot of the senior center planning activities, including the one that I'm currently managing in White County, Georgia. It's a dynamic, very robust, I think the best senior center in North Georgia and we're very proud of that. And I think the communication between myself as the manager, whether it's in a county or a town like Falmouth, with the senior director, working with her folk, the staff of the senior center and being able to communicate and involve and engage as many seniors. I think it's really important for seniors to be engaged and not become socially isolated. So I think that's really an important aspect of what senior services and senior centers provide.
Thank you. Could you comment on your experience making a community or workplace more equitable and inclusive?
Yes, let me start with the inclusivity part. Being an inclusive organization, as you all know, has to do with the sense that employees feel like they're engaged and part of the process within the organization, able to make decisions, kind of that shared decision-making process. To me, that is kind of at the heart of being an inclusive organization and that their opinions and their thoughts matter to the folks in management positions and to the elected governing body. One of the strategies that I've, I've engaged in over the past several years, and I mentioned this before, the employee engagement survey, giving folks an opportunity to kind of share, completely one-hundred-percent anonymous, because we don't obviously want to restrict or make people feel concerned about any kind of feed, negative feedback. But these one-hundred-percent anonymous employee engagement surveys allow people to get a sense that their voice does count. Having that documents, like any document, any planning efforts or any kind of organizational kind of look, is great, but unless you do something with the documents, if it sits on a shelf, you, number one, destroy the trust that you've developed in the employee group preparing the responses. So as a manager and as an elected body, I would argue that it's important that you have an action plan. So what I'm doing now in the, in the organization I'm currently managing, we just launched that, where we just closed the study, I should say, it was open for about three weeks. What we're doing with the results of that study, I'm forming small focus groups, employee focus groups. The department heads are going to oversee, but the department head for the respective employee group is going to be different. We're going to kind of cycle around so that the public works director, department head, is not overseeing the small group studies of the public work staff. Maybe the senior center director will be doing that. So it's a good way for me, as the manager, to, again, engage with the employees and make them know that, hey, the time and effort that you spent in putting this document together and helping me as the manager understand what the, what the issues are and where we need to make some adjustments and tweaks, we're going to actually take some, some immediate action steps. I like to say, there's a lot of things that come out of these employee engagement studies that are low-hanging fruit, some of the easier things to accomplish in a relatively short period of time. Some of those are longer period, mid- and long-term fixes, so to speak, compensation, that sort of thing. But the bottom line is, it's important for the employees to understand that there's a plan in place and that your efforts in participating in the study were not, were not wasted.
Great, thank you.
And if I may, I'm sorry, if I have just a couple more, a couple more minutes, I'll turn to wrap it up. The, the equity piece, I think was the other half of that question that you had asked? So equity, there's been a lot of emphasis over the past few years through my professional association, the International Sea County Management Association. And it's unfortunate, I think there's been more focus in the past years, decade, but over the past two or three, specifically, that's become a focus. And candidly, and I'm almost ashamed to say, I hadn't placed it in my thirteen-year career, I hadn't placed a whole lot of focus on it. But equity, in my opinion, it's not about, it's making sure that your organization, the structure, the opportunities that are available, whether they be promotional opportunities, the career progression and career tracks, those, those opportunities are available and accessible, reachable by every member of the organization if that's their desire. It takes into account, you know, unique personal circumstances based upon, you know, a group experience, but it's really important that you make access to those kind of programs and promotional opportunities and, and opportunities in general within the organization available to everyone, and equally.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So the town has a local comprehensive plan and annually the select board revises a shorter-term strategic plan. Please articulate your vision for Falmouth as it aligns with these plans and if it does not align, where does it differ and why?
First of all, I was really excited to see that the, the Falmouth Select Board has a strategic plan. I was, I was aware and had seen kind of the general comprehensive plan, but five-year, taking that plan down into five-year increments, I think is hugely important. So I was excited to see that the board has been working on that. I've read through the five, the current five-year strategic plan and I'm very familiar with the seven kind of initiatives or strategic priorities in it. My vision, and this is important, I think, and I'm glad you, you asked the question as far as how, how it differs or aligns with my vision. My vision is working with the select board, actively engaging with the select board, the members of the community, the members of several of the boards and committees and commissions throughout, spread throughout the town, on account, and the staff, obviously, the boots on the ground, the folks that are actually going to be coming up with these great ideas and amazing ideas how to, how to accomplish these objectives. But importantly, what I, what I feel professionally, having looked at the plan and kind of seen kind of the progress towards it, and this is not meant to be, to offend, is that it's kind of missing a connection, kind of a nexus. And what I propose, if I were fortunate to have this opportunity to become your next town manager, performance measurements and coming up with key performance indicators within each department is something that I've done for the past at least ten years. I've done it in large cities, the city of Mesa, the city of Atlanta, where I've worked before, is at the department level. But as the, as the leader and manager of an organization, I've done it most recently in Barrow County, Highlands Ranch, Special District, and currently in White County. I ask each department head, and this is probably in the first six months we would start this initiative, to come up with five or six key performance indicators that really measure the, the core function of what they do. And it's difficult because the departments perform so many different important services, so they have to kind of pick and choose and prioritize. But ultimately, what we do as a group, and this is a group activity between me and the department heads and the staff, is we align those key performance indicators, five or six, within each department to one or more of the strategic priorities outlined in the strategic plan. And by doing that, we can literally, by quarter, every three months, we get together as a group, myself, department heads, you all as a select board, as a governing body, and we talk about our progress, where we're falling short and reaching targets. We actually set targets. I think that's important, having some kind of a benchmark, something that you're reaching for. But these quarterly meetings, completely transparent, they're in a public meeting and we kind of share information and talk about what the plan is. When I first kind of introduced the concept to department heads about performance measurement, I sometimes get a little bit of kind of deer-in-the-headlight resistance about, well, you know, the manager's going to beat me over the head with a hammer, so to speak, if I don't meet my numbers, make my mark every quarter. And I, I quickly dispel that, that kind of myth. Literally what performance measurement is, and it's important because I feel what gets measured actually gets done, gets accomplished in a timely manner. But I tell them that this is more of a wrench, that analogy or metaphor, it's a wrench, not a hammer. It allows us periodically throughout the course of the year, every quarter, three months, to get together and make adjustments. If we see that we're falling behind in a certain key area, we make adjustments to what we're doing so that at the end of the year, we can actually sit back and praise one another about all the great accomplishments, accomplishments that we've made throughout the course of that year, meeting those strategic goals that the governing body has set.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Renshaw, how did you prepare for this interview? Did you visit the town? If you didn't visit, why not? And if you did, did you meet with anyone? What material did you review and what can you tell me about Falmouth from your search?
That's a great question. Let me see if I, so I have visited. I began my, my, my interest in visitation probably thirty, over thirty years ago. When I was in the Navy back nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety-two, I was stationed for a period of time in Groton, Connecticut. Took a tour up here, a visit specifically to the Cape. So I was familiar in general, even though it's been a long time since that first visit, with just kind of the natural beauty of the area. With regards to specifically how I prepared for the interview process, for the past probably three months, I've been, I've been, I'm, I'm a quick study and I've, I've had the, the privilege and the opportunity to work in four different states. And each one of those states has had nuances and idiosyncrasies and differences as to management, budgeting, local governance in general. And candidly and honestly, none of the four state, previous four states that I've managed in has been quite as unique. in, has been quite as unique as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in with regards to town meeting, select board, the governing body, there's parallels, obviously, between city councils that I've reported to, worked for in the past, and Board of Commissioners and Board of Directors. So I've done a lot of study, and I was really, really energized and excited. As a manager for the past 13, 14 years, city or county manager, every organization I've managed in has been located in an area that's got a very collegial, very engaged management group association. And the Massachusetts Municipal Association, I've spent hours on their website, literally just going through, whether it's labor negotiations and union negotiations and the importance and how critical that is to the budgeting process and how that's done, to reading through the guidelines to a town meeting that were produced at the state level. Had an opportunity to read through the committee handbook that was produced by the town clerk. So I've spent literally the past three months trying to, and gross, and just bury myself as much as possible into the very minute detail of Falmouth Town Government and the community itself. And quite honestly, and you all know this, and I'm going to be honest and candid, you can only glean so much from a website, and I understand that. I think over my 30 years of experience working in local government, it actually takes getting into the organization, rolling your sleeves up, and actually practicing and learning the nuances and idiosyncrasies of the organization. That's where the rubber hits the road, so to speak. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity. But I've spent months and months preparing, through research and reading and studying, and trying to put my hands on as much documentation at the state, local level, as I possibly can.
Okay, thank you. The next question is rather long, so I can go back and repeat parts of it if needed. So, please explain the importance of attracting, developing, and maintaining a professional and stable workforce that provides quality public services to the community. And there's three parts. A, identify the elements essential to accomplishing this goal, how you would implement this in the town of Falmouth. B is, how would you sell the costs and benefits of increased services to the public, considering the financial issues facing the town, and considering it relies on $1.6 million of non-recurring revenue to fund its operating expenses, and does not have a dedicated and recurring revenue source outside of debt to fund capital expenditures? There's one more part, and that's part C, what is the value of maintaining a competitive wage and benefit package for town employees, and how do you successfully sell this concept to the taxpayers of the community? That's long, and I'm happy to repeat any part of it if needed.
So let me start by saying that it's been my experience, again, as either a department head or over the past 13 years as a city and county manager, that there is no more important role, in my opinion, of a manager than to be able to enhance, improve, develop a trained, expert, satisfied, and engaged workforce. One of the tools that I've used, and I appreciate the kind of the additional layer of question about the cost and benefits, I'm always looking for, fiscally, I'm very conservative, I'm always looking for trying to achieve the greatest return on investment and try to minimize cost. One of the very simple, very simple strategies that I've used, and I'm using it now in the organization I'm currently managing. We can talk about succession planning, the importance, and it is hugely important. But as a manager, I think it's my role, and I'm going to say this candidly, it's my role to grow and train my replacement ultimately, put people in the position that they have the opportunity through that equity kind of programming and activities, literally to train my replacement at some stage. I've been working in this field for 30 years, and quite honestly, I feel like I have another 10 to 11 years that I want to do this, and I want that to be right here in the town of Falmouth, honestly. This is my landing place, and I'm looking for a community where there's a good fit and with my values and my professional strengths and what I can add value to as a manager. But the strategy that I've been using over the past several years, because this challenge with developing and retaining and recruiting a talented, expert workforce is not unique to the Cape. I saw it out west when I managed in Colorado, it's certainly an issue in the Southeast and Georgia. What I've done is, at very minimal cost, very minimal cost, it's more about people cost in terms of my time and department heads, but what I've been able to put together is a Leadership Development Academy. It's a, right now, we're envisioning a 12-week process whereby we grow leaders from within the organization. Department heads nominates, so to speak, folks within their departments to attend this 12-week Leadership Development Academy. The amount of return that I see as a manager, and I did this in Highlands Ranch, Colorado, as well, in 2021, the amount of return that we see from that program alone versus the cost, again, very minimal cost, and I'm going to throw a number out, I believe it was around $15,000 in kind of programming costs that we used a consultant initially to kind of help us set up the program, but I think I'm adept and have the skill set now to kind of put that together without the consultant's help, to be able to reduce those costs. But really, the engagement, the amount of satisfaction, and the return that we get as a manager of an organization, when employees come up and thank us for the opportunity to kind of learn, and it basically covers a gam, a kind of a spectrum, leadership and management principles, the core kind of things that it takes to become a great leader. I do involve some outside speakers at times. There's an association, National Association of Counties, that has a program that I kind of modeled mine after, Professional Development Academy. And again, General Colin Powell was kind of one of the people that kind of put this program together years ago before his passing. But I really took a lot from that program, having gone through the curriculum, and kind of picked it apart, so to speak. So I think in implementing that type of a leadership development program within the town of Falmouth would really return huge, huge dividends. And again, a relatively minimal nominal cost, I think, if you could put that together. And in the value of, I'm going to ask you if you don't mind, sir, to repeat the last, section C of that question, the value of managing, my notes kind of...
And what is the value of maintaining a competitive wage and benefit package for town employees, and how do you successfully sell this concept to the taxpayers of the community?
Thank you for repeating that. The value of maintaining a competitive compensation package, it's been my experience, and most recently, in the county that I'm currently managing in White County, Georgia, and I'll use this as an example. It's been approximately 19 years since that organization has conducted a compensation study, a pay and salary compensation study, best practice through my association, the International Sea County Managers Association. It's typically to perform one of those studies every five, six years, just to kind of get a, again, I like to use the term pulse, but to get a pulse, benchmarking, kind of comparables, developing comparables to other organizations, in order to remain competitive. Should never, ever become something that's, the last time a compensation pay study was done has been over a decade. I think you fall too, you run the risk of falling too far behind, in my opinion. How you sell that benefit is, again, making sure to be, the costs associated, the way I've sold this in the past to the community and to governing boards, the cost to replace an employee who decides to resign, to go elsewhere and take their talents and skills that they've developed within the organization that they're leaving, the cost to replace that asset is tremendous. So I've always been of the opinion, why not do what we can upfront as an organization to try to maintain that competitiveness in terms of salaries, so that we're not having to go back, not only pay those, try to arrive at that payment of the competitive salary, but also the retraining, the cost associated with the retraining of those employees that unfortunately made the decision to leave. I also think, that I've found over my, over the past 13 or 14 years, that it's helped me explain the value of being competitive in terms of wages and the complete benefits We kind of monitor that pulse by, again, the employee engagement surveys, and we kind of get a good sense for where we're at. And again, by being able to convey the message to the executive, legislative portion of the organization, as far as the importance of maintaining and getting where we need to be, I think is really important.
Thank you. And my last question is, describe your method of developing a cooperative team approach among town employees. Please explain how you would do this with the department heads as well as the rank-and-file, and I think you've already touched on that, but that's my last question.
Thank you. So again, the camaraderie and the spirit decor and the morale of an organization, the heart, is the heartbeat of the organization. What I've done in the past, and I'm really excited to see that the town has maybe not just instituted, but has continued the kind of recognition ceremonies. I think a recognition of an employee for a job well done goes a long, long ways, just that public recognition of something that the employee has done, whether it's above and beyond, or just kind of an exceptional achievement. I've also been, over the past 13 years, I just had one of these in the organization I currently manage, employee appreciation cookouts. I've just been amazed, and everybody enjoys a cookout, I'm not amazed by that fact, but the amount of appreciation and just happiness that the manager's out flipping burgers on a grill, and that's what I like to do, just kind of getting engaged within that kind of small, you know, couple, few hour kind of event, and gives me an opportunity to interact with employees throughout all kind of rungs and levels of the organization. And I think that kind of effort by the manager is hugely important. Again, getting out, letting the staff get to talk to you and get to know you as a person, not just putting a face to the name, but getting to know you as a person, your family a bit, you know, as much as comfortable to share, I think that's important. And again, that kind of engagement, whether it's a staff appreciation picnic, or the biweekly meetings that I've been talking about, you know, meeting with the department heads and then involving that ladder-up and ladder-down communication flow. I think as much as we can as managers engage throughout the course of any year and actively engage and come back and revisit where we're falling short, and listening to the employees where we're falling short, and the communication and the dialogue is important.
Sounds good. For us, it might be a clambake.
Clambake, yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, you indicated to us that you've kind of done your research about Falmouth, including Enterprise, our newspaper. What do you consider to be the top three issues facing our town?
The top three issues? I have done quite a bit of research on the Enterprise, but I think specifically, having watched probably three or four hours minimally of select board videos and just trying to get a sense for the activity, and the comments, and the public participation, and as I discussed earlier with you all, the strategic plan, the seven elements of that, the strategic priorities included within that, the current five-year plan. Of those, and I think they're all tremendously important, of those, what I feel, in my opinion, are the most pressing. I'm going to start with affordable housing, because it touches us all. It touches the community that I'm currently managing, if you can believe, in North Georgia, the foothills of the Blue Ridge Mountains, short-term rentals and that Airbnb and VRBO phenomenon that, and again, it's not just in the Southeast or New England, it's, it was out in Colorado when I managed in Colorado, it's a national issue. So coming to grips and coming to salute, arriving at some solutions, some real practical solutions to address the affordable workforce housing, so that the folks that work in this community, this great community, that spend their time in the restaurants, in the service industry, the teachers, the police officers, the firefighters, that they can actually afford to live and not have to commute long distances. You've all probably seen, you see it in a lot of economic development reports, the migration, in and out migration patterns of workers in a community. And I know for a fact, because I've seen some numbers here, that a large percentage of folks unfortunately have to outmigrate after the end of their workday to other places to live. So I think that's probably the primary concern I see, is the potential new manager, not just because it was listed number one in the strategic plan, but I do see that as the most, one of the most pressing issues. I think, in my opinion also, the, you know, I've kind of, I've touched on this throughout, but the organizational health and efficiency, and I think that's hugely important, too. The ability for an organization to grow, in my opinion, as a manager, if you're not growing, and again, moving that needle forward as an organization, and being innovative and coming up with creative solutions to problems, and instilling in your staff and growing your staff, if you're not doing those things, you're falling behind. We can talk about being competitive or not competitive, in my opinion, if we're not innovative and we're not creative. The role of a great leader, I believe, and I'm going to steal and paraphrase a quote from Simon Sinek, I just read a book called Start With Why, and Mr. Sinek says that the role of a great leader is not to necessarily come up with all the great ideas, all the innovative ideas and creative ideas, but the role of a great leader is really to create and instill and foster a spirit and a culture in an organization where those great ideas are allowed to happen. I mean, from the line-level staff all the way up to the organization. So I think that organizational development and health and enhancing that is going to be critically important to the town of Falmouth, because I think that touches so many different areas. You know, we talked about competitive wages and the problems with retention and recruitment. So I think if we address that and make Falmouth the community of choice in which to work, I think we're going to go a long, long ways towards addressing those retention and recruitment challenges. And lastly, and I learned this in the five years that I managed in the Outer Banks area of North Carolina, I think it's the coastal management and that resiliency piece, again, one of the elements of the strategic plan, but hugely important. And I'm going to be very candid with you all, 10 years ago, before I took the position in Camden County, North Carolina, I knew very, very little about sea level rise. Sure, I, my master's program, I took some environmental courses, and I was familiar with climate change, but really the impact on coastal communities. It was kind of a foreign concept until I spent the five years in the Outer Banks in North Carolina. We partnered with University, East Carolina University, and some effort from North Carolina State to kind of look at the issue, and that was, and they generated, obviously, the report, and that was my first kind of eye-opening experience, kind of in my face, so to speak, understanding the urgency of dealing with coastal management issues, sea level rise, protecting our valuable resources, coastal resources, to the extent that we can. I think that's going to be a huge challenge for the town going forward, and kind of one of those immediate, one of the three immediate things that need to be addressed.
How do you motivate employees to achieve more and suggest innovative ways to perform routine day-to-day operations? And how do you build morale to motivate employees?
I love the term innovation. I've used it a few times. One of the strategies in terms of how I motivate people, I think everybody, to a certain degree, is competitive. One of the things I've done over the past several years, in terms of communication and engaging and getting employees excited about what the great things that are happening in the organization, so I put together a biweekly bulletin, I call the current version or edition of it, M.I.K.E. on the M.I.C. And it's basically my way of communicating all the great things that are happening within the organization through departmental kind of program and activity report. And I mentioned that we're all, to some degree, competitive. I think what I've seen over the past several years where I've used this is that departments, number one, appreciate being kind of made aware of what's going on in other departments. I think it does a great deal to kind of eliminate and knock down that silo effect. There's a lot of cooperation and collaboration and partnering that happens as a result of just being exposed on a biweekly basis to all the things that are happening in the organization. But also, I think it gets the competitive juices flowing, so to speak, within departments to, not one-up, but to look within their own departments to find issues that they can maybe come up with some creative solutions. It's kind of a way to share information and pass down, you know, strategies and techniques and best practices in the Public Works Roads Department that Parks and Recreation may utilize at some point. And I've also, it's been a few years, but one of the organizations I managed, Camden County, North Carolina, from 2011 to 16, I came up, and I didn't invent this, but I think I perfected it. I came up with a program, again, nominal cost, and we'd have to kind of obviously discuss whether or not, you know, the applicability and how it would work in Falmouth, but it was an innovation rewards program. Basically, I had a committee formed that would review, it was it was more than an employee suggestion box, which I think is great. This takes it to the next level. Employees would recommend or suggest based upon their expertise and their individual areas, their workshops, ways where we could do a process more efficiently, more cost-effectively. The committee made up of department heads, finance, would kind of get together, myself would get together and kind of review these applications or suggestions. And if it was shown and it could be shown and demonstrated that it was going to result in a savings to the organization, to the county in this case, there would be a reward passed on, either, either a monetary, small monetary award, time off perhaps. So we'd have to kind of look at that. But I think it's a way to motivate people and really, again, I can talk as a manager all day long until I'm blue in the face about the importance of ideas coming from throughout all levels of the organization. But sometimes you have to kind of motivate through other means, I've found. And I think this innovation rewards program was one kind of small way and, and again, at a nominal, minimal expense that we achieved that. They had great results and great feedback from the employees there.
Explain how honest communications, honor and integrity relate to developing a quality working relationship with the public, committees and town employees. And if you can provide an example for each of those constituencies in which your honesty and integrity may have hurt or embarrassed you in the short run, then what you did to repair that?
So quite literally, my, my word has always been my bond. I, I am a person, as a manager or otherwise, just a, a man that says what's on his mind and, and follows up and does what he say, what he says. I think, you know, developing that trust and confidence and again, whether it's in the question specifically to the public, to the community in general. The word of a manager is, is his or her bond. And I, I'm thinking throughout my career, I, I, I'm a huge advocate and proponent for engaging with the community and I've used different forums, coffee talks, most recently coffee talks where I can actually get out into a community. I'm, I'm thinking, working with a particular organization, and if you all don't mind, I'm not going to name the, the, the organization that I was managing at the time, but it was, it was a Chamber of Commerce event that I spoke to. We were working on a pretty significant economic development project. And when you talk about trust being developed, earned, and I, I feel the trust is, and confidence is earned. The trust that was broken because of a comment that I made, again, at this Chamber of Commerce event, a room full of business leaders, which you all can envision, spilled the beans, so to speak, with regards to kind of, kind of this economic development project that was looking very hard at, at the area, at the, at the county, in this particular case that I was managing. So I, I, I damaged and harmed some confidence and trust with regards to the, at the state level and then had to go back and repair that, working with economic development professionals at the state level because whether there's a, a, a secret kind of code name applied to the project, in this case there was, and I got perhaps too close to, to identifying kind of the genesis and the basis of the project. Within the community itself, because in addition to business leaders in the room, there are also just interested folks that wanted to know what was happening. I had to go back and basically apologize for that errant comment where I basically crossed the line of, of revealing a, a project, an economic development project that was coming into the community. It was embarrassing for me professionally because I, I was aware of the risk. I thought that I was kind of following the, the letter and the intention of, of keeping the project secret, but divulging just enough information where the, the general practice of this particular corporation that was looking at coming and relocating into the area was damaging. So I apologized and worked on both repairing that relationship that I really enjoyed and enjoyed after with the state economic development folks as well as with the, the residents and the business leadership within that room of the Chamber of Commerce meeting.
Unless you want me to ask that additional question that I asked before, but I thought I'd wait for everybody to be through.
That would be great, thank you. What have you learned about this current select board? And what do you think will be your biggest challenges working with this board? And how would you be a facilitator when there is conflict amongst the board members?
So I, I've had the pleasure of working with, with five different elected governing bodies over the course of my career. Each one has had some kind of unique characteristics and idiosyncrasies. What I've observed based upon my kind of research into the, the Falmouth, town of Falmouth Select Board. You're, you're very collegial and deliberate in your approach. Not always agreeing, but in my opinion, based upon what I've seen, being able to agree to disagree and then move on to the next issue and the next topic. In my past as a manager, when there's been conflict and, and I, my first experience as a city manager back in two thousand and ten, as a city manager for a small, small community in, in central Georgia, the city of Grantville, there was a lot of dissension within, within meetings, within, within closed executive sessions. What I've always been able to do, and I, this is a strength that I feel like I've developed over thirty years, and it probably started in nineteen ninety-three when I, when I became a police officer in, in learning kind of how to de-escalate and diffuse situations. I've always been able to do exactly that, take tempers from a very high level and ratchet them down incrementally. I've always been also a good consensus builder. I'm able to meet people in the middle. So when I, when I've worked in the past with boards that have disagreed and like vehemently disagreed on issues, I'll typically try to meet individually with the board member and just kind of, and, and again, trying to identify as best I can where that middle ground may be based upon my understanding of the, of the issue and kind of the separation. And working back and forth between the individual members. It's important for any manager, again, the communication and the dialogue when, when there's an issue like that, I don't ever want, and I've never excluded the entire board from kind of the updates and kind of briefings on where we're at. So I don't want this select board to, to, to infer that I'm talking about like having secret meetings, but they're very intentional meetings focused on coming, coming to a resolution on a, on a specific topic. And again, my, my, my thirty years of experience, I've seen things that have worked and seen things that have not worked so well. I've worked with, like I said, five or six different governing bodies, elected boards, and those, and membership has changed obviously over the years and have managed in those organizations. So again, being that good consensus builder, identifying a middle ground in a, in a, in a solution that I like to say a win-win solution, but sometimes you can't land on win-win. Solutions that both parties are equally displeased with, no, that's not right either. Really coming, coming, coming to a solution where we can move on and we've, we've, we've reached a compromise that everybody can live with. I've, I've always been very adept at doing that.
So the, the second question is, how do you build consensus among the board, employees and citizens? So would you just speak to the second half of that question? Would you use the same technique for employees and citizens?
Well, to, to instill and, and develop consensus among community, the community and employees and, and the board. Communication and dialogue and the forms of that communication, I think, are very important. As a practice, I, I, I take, I think transparency to the, to the nth degree and I think it's important to do so. I've talked about some, some documents and like the performance measurement practices and, and procedures that we do. You know, all of the documentation, I feel, is important to be open and transparent to the public with. But in regards to activities of the, of the governing body, and in this case of the select board, one of the things I learned very early on, and I think this goes back to my, my really early days as a city manager back in two thousand and ten. In order for there not to be a disconnect between the policy decisions that the, the governing body is making on a, on a, on a meeting-by-meeting basis. I've always found, found it important and essential really that that communication is, is passed down throughout the organization through, I call it an after-action, but kind of a report to the staff, department heads and the staff, of, of the actions and decisions that were made. Some organizations that I've had a chance to visit, there's, there is a disconnect and there's, there's a lack of awareness, quite honestly, at the staff level about decisions that the governing body is making. So I think these after-action kind of reports and synopsis summaries of the, of the, of the, of the items that were decided and, and to move on, to move forward with is important. In regards to the community, I, I mentioned the community engagement piece, a passion of mine, certainly the public participation and engaging and being transparent and sharing with the community what's happening within the organization. The, and this is a small, tiny example, but I think it's an important one. I've been told by members of the public in my current organization that's important that, that, that biweekly report of activities and programs and services is posted to the website. I think that's important, kind of a resource for the community in general to kind of see what's happening within the organization. So that's the way that I try to keep, try to dovetail what's happening at, at the, at the governing body level, the policy decisions that are being made, dovetail that and communicate that down to the departments so that they can disseminate that information through their divisions and the staff so that everybody is, is on the same sheet of music, quite honestly, with what's happening.
And how those decisions were made?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jer, if I may, I think part of, the second part of the first question didn't quite answer.
The second piece?
What do you think will be your biggest challenge working with this particular board?
What do you see as your biggest challenges working with this board?
Thank you for repeating that question. Is, is someone never having managed, and I'm going to be candid and honest because I've, I've, I've been thinking about this for probably the past month, is somebody who's never managed in New England, getting and, and managed in the Commonwealth and getting up to speed as quickly, I don't see it a challenge. I see, I see it as, as an opportunity for me to grow as a, as a professional manager. But being able to work with a board that's been in place and is, is, has expectations. So I think that's kind of a, an issue that will be, that will be my issue to resolve as quickly as possible, just getting comfortable with that, with the, with the, with the governance of, of the town. And I'm just being candid and honest. Because it is a, it is different, there's a lot of parallels, but there are, there are some significant differences. I'm a quick study, anyone can say that. But I think that will be kind of a challenge in the, in the immediate period where, where if I were given the opportunity to be hired, working with you, developing that partnership and the confidence and the trust and instilling upon you all as a board, my abilities to manage, even though I don't have that direct New England Commonwealth of Massachusetts experience.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board, Mr. Patterson?
You want me to start?
Yes.
Mentioned the difference between states. We have an interesting relationship between the school department and the town department. And they're, they have different authorities. And so obviously the superintendent of schools is responsible for the operation of the schools. On the town side, we provide more than fifty percent of the funding for the school program. There's other direct state funding and other sources that they use. But this relationship that we have, you know, with the superintendent of schools and then obviously the finance director on the town side and, and the town manager is an important one. And I was just going to ask you, how do you see yourself managing that relationship for an operation that's outside of your supervision?
So thank you for the question. And I'm going to, I'm going to start with my experience again from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and sixteen when I managed in coastal North Carolina, Camden County. Because the similarities and parallels are probably more distinct in regards to the funding. In North Carolina, when I managed there, the, the county was the, was the levying authority. However, there was, the capital bricks and mortar kind of projects were a hundred percent funded by the county with regards to school facilities. So myself and the school superintendent, and he was there my entire duration, he and I developed a really close working relationship and, and dialogue and communication. The county was experiencing growth in a lot of different areas, but there were some bricks and mortar projects that were on the near horizon that he and I worked together with and involving again, the finance departments within, within the county in those decisions, certainly the, the, the seven-member elected body that I reported to. But I think the dialogue and, and the collaboration, I use the word collaboration a lot because I think it's so important in what we do as professional managers. Having that, that access and the ability to just pick up the phone and dial my cellphone if there's an issue or a topic that needs to be addressed in the, or in kind of an exigent kind of emergency type situation, I think that's important. And with regards to other similar kind of practices, in, in, in the southeast primarily, the state of Georgia where I've managed as a county manager, the majority of my career, there's also a close cooperation and collaboration. The school boards, as you all may know, in Georgia have levying, tax levying authority themselves, so there's not the, so to speak, the financial kind of ramifications and implications. But there is a lot of joint collaboration on projects. And I'll use one great example. When I managed in the county of Barrow, Barrow County, Georgia, from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-one, for years and years, there was discussed a project, a community, kind of a cultural center that was going to be jointly funded between the school board and, and the county. The project morphed due to budget constraints into what ultimately became an amphitheater project. Really an outstanding, exciting project. But myself and the school superintendent, who also, we paralleled and kind of shared the same tenure, worked very closely, I worked very closely with the school superintendent to kind of bring the pieces together. I, I, I see myself as, as somebody that likes to get the work done and get things done and accomplished. I'm, I think I'm very astute at project management. The school superintendent at the time that I, that I was working with had a lot of different issues, as you can imagine, any school superintendent has, a lot of things happening. So he basically deferred a lot of the project management, the, the construction activities to me. But we maintain a constant communication and, and again, develop that trust and that mutual respect for one another in our roles. And ultimately brought that sixteen-hundred-seat amphitheater to fruition, which is still a great amenity in that community and one that we're both very proud of.
Mr. Brown?
Oh, I think I've had a good interview, I think we're good.
Any other questions?
Mr. Renshaw, you spoke of all the, all the other places that you've worked and it seems like you speak of them with reverence. Could you tell me what the, you, you see it as an attribute to have traveled so much ground and learned things? Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, sir, I, what I'm very proud of is the, the collective experiences that I've, that I've been able to, to, to acquire over the past thirty years. Again, whether it's, you know, managing as a department level, director of code enforcement for a large city, city of Atlanta, neighbor outreach coordinator, the community engagement piece with the city of Mesa, Arizona, a large community of about five hundred thousand. So yes, I'm, I'm very proud and I, I think that, you know, that breadth and depth of my experience sets me apart. It's kind of the career path less traveled, so to speak, of, of, of city and county management. Talking to my peers, my colleagues, they would tell me that. So I'm very proud of it. And again, I think it's that, that general experience and having touched on so many different areas, the public safety, the community engagements pieces throughout the course of my career that, that really, I'm very proud of that skillset that I've developed.
Mr. Renshaw, if you may, just one short one. Mr. Renshaw, what do you, what do you feel with respect to, to staff? The benefit of an exit, an exit interview with staffing? Do you think there's a benefit to that?
I do. And, and what I've done over the past ten years is primarily as a county manager, I always like, I'm not a micromanager, but I think I've mentioned before that I like to manage by walking around. But I also see a great value in, in exit interviews. As I said earlier, retention of employees is a challenge, a national issue, national challenge. With the pandemic, I mean, it kind of exasperated, made the bad situation worse, I think, in terms of trying to keep and recruit people. On the retention side, I think the exit interviews have value because it tells me, and I participate one-on-one with employees that are exiting my current organization. It, it explains to me and allows them to kind of, and I don't write things down, I, I, I listen to them. I sit and listen. They have a separate form that is filled out, kind of an exit form. But as a manager, I want them to tell me honestly, brutally honestly, kind of the reasons why. You know, what are the issues? If there's something that I need to fix in the organization. So I do that and I place a high value on exit interviews. I also, and, and this is kind of not a, it's not a new phenomenon, but I think it's some, a new model of practice, but I think it's important. In the, in the human resources field, stay interviews. Why are people staying in the organization, I think is hugely important. So I've started doing that. Again, I, I'd love to kind of experiment and be innovative and creative with new models and new practices. and new practices. And again, this concept of stay interviews is not rocket science, listening to people, talking to people one-on-one, small groups, what it is about the town of Falmouth that makes them stay. I also do all of the onboarding interviews with new staff. I feel that that's important, again, putting the face to the name, certainly, but also it allows me an opportunity. I have, I've developed a kind of an index card, so to speak, it's laminated, kind of the size of a business card that I give to the new employees that come into the organization that basically encapsulates, summarizes the core values, mission statement, value statement of the organization. I don't quiz them in the halls, but I used to work for a city manager that did. But I think it's important that they kind of take away from that first meeting with me. It's my first opportunity to be able to kind of instill in them the core values of the organization.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else from the board, questions or comments?
I said it's four o'clock.
Yes. And so I will only give you a minute to tell us anything about you that you would like us to know that we did not cover in this interview.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. The 30 years of my experience, the breadth and depth, I think makes me an exceptional candidate. You have three very, very strong candidates and a difficult decision to make. I want to address the board and the community with this last thought and statements. I realize that the shortness of my tenure, the last couple of positions that I've been at, is a concern and an issue. I'm looking for a good fit, the organization whose values are kind of parallel to mine, and in terms of the innovation and the forward-leaning, forward-thinking type of values, the creativity and the ability and the freedom to kind of innovate and change. Organizations that prefer status quo don't excite me, don't energize me, and what I'm looking for is, for the last 10, 11 years of my career, which I think I've already mentioned, is kind of where I see the window of my professional service ending. I want that place to be my last place that I manage, and I certainly want it to be Falmouth. Because I've developed, just in the short time that I've been here, the past 72 hours, really developed a passion for the community, just having walked around, having a chance to work with one of the town meeting members and taking a tour this morning, just a tremendous community, and I'm really excited about the opportunity. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. And the board will take a five-minute break. Thank you. It's now 4:10, we're 10 minutes behind our schedule, and we have our interview with Mr. Wojcicki.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are you?
Been better. No. Falmouth residents were promised rigorous town manager selection process. Well, you've darn near killed me. So it was unsuccessful. I have to project in order to get anything to come out, so I want to push this back just a little bit.
Okay. All right, so we are going to begin with our questions, and at the end of the interview, you will have an opportunity to speak directly to the board and to wrap up the interview. And I'm trying to keep the interviews to between 45 minutes and 60 minutes. So we will kick off with Mr. Zelinski.
Good afternoon, Mr. Wojcicki, thank you for coming. I'd like to know, first off, how you'll spend your first six months in Falmouth and explain your strategy and how you plan to implement that strategy, and please provide some thoughtful detail while being fairly concise.
Funny? Yeah, because I have a very long list of things I would do, and I just would say I'd be profoundly busy for a long time. I have a list of things that I use to assess organizational effectiveness and fiscal management practices and where a community stands in terms of its fiscal health. And I also think there's a burden to be lifted here in terms of getting the message out that there's a different kind of management style in place, and would hope that people would be able to buy into it. So in terms of, I have a long list of things that I always want to look at. Some of them sound very basic, but I have found in my experience that if you don't ask those questions, you can't count on the answer being what you thought it was. And you may learn a lot of things by asking a question. That may not be the exact answer to the question you asked, but it leads you in a direction to learn more about how something runs. What are your insurance coverages, deductibles, limits, items that are covered, not covered? What's your claims history? I'm going to give you examples, it's a really long list. How do you calculate overtime pay for public safety employees? Are you doing it right? How do your wages and compensation compare to other communities? How do people feel about where they are and what they're doing? That's a general flavor of it, but there's, you know, a whole bunch of things that I really want to go through in order to be able to learn how the organization runs. I had a former mayor once advise me, look, as long as you have a good relationship with your numbers person and a relationship with legal counsel, you will know most of what you need to know about how the organization is going. So those are very early interviews and the conversation. I tend to be a bit of a physical determinist, so we can all write our most wonderful policy pieces. At the end of the day, if you flush the toilet, does it work? If you turn on the tap, is there water? What is going on with the major infrastructure commitments of the town? What's the status of any deferred maintenance? What do people think about the systems that they run every day? Are they able to get the people they need to run them? So there are these many, many different health checks. What I would hope for from the financial side and from the legal side is to learn those things that may not be so obvious that need to be discussed. I've had a lot of people tell me the town doesn't have a large portfolio of litigation, and that's good to hear, but there's still always going to be that conversation that you want to hear about, maybe things that aren't in the court yet, but things that have been brewing for a while. On the financial side, you can get a snapshot, let's call it, in your comprehensive annual report, you might have change in net position. I'm smart enough to know you could cook whatever book you want to to get your change in net position, to go in one direction or the other. And it's not really cooking the book, but it's, if you invest in a brand-new asset, your change in net position's going to go up, but you haven't really changed the operational dynamic of the town very much at all. So when you go through your financial management and you're looking for, what is the history of free cash? What are the sources of free cash? Have you dedicated revenue streams to any specific needs of the town? And what is the outlook for those dedicated revenue streams? Are they actually going to continue to support operations or not? And lastly, because you wanted me to be concise, stop with the capital budget, you do have a rigorous capital budgeting process, but how does the prioritization work? Are there items that could eliminate operating costs going forward that need to float to the top and get financed? Just what is the overall status of the assets of the town? Because once again, you can present a really strong operating picture and have all kinds of free cash, but you're getting there because you're not taking care of the really expensive stuff that over time lead to be financed.
My second question is, how often do you normally meet with your department heads?
Two answers, as a group, so to have a department head meeting every couple of weeks, once a month, a lot depends on what's going on. What does season, we meet more often than we do in a busy season when we're not busy at town hall, but they're busy in the field doing their things. But that's not the full picture. I probably meet with most of my department heads at least once or twice a week, every week. So I can count on seeing my fire chief, assistant chief, two or three times a week. And I know I always have at least a Monday and a Thursday briefing from the highway.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, I'm going to spare Mr. Wojcicki on the what happens on day one, because I think he covets most of that for me.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Scott Price?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you again. Now, could you please describe your understanding of the culture of Falmouth in your own words?
Looking at the town from the outside, you have this wonderfully vibrant, engaged community that, on the public, government-nailing, government side, is looking for a high-performance government to meet their expectations, policy-wise and performance-wise in terms of delivery of services. There's a wide diversity of well-argued points, and that is absolutely essential. Democracy is founded upon the idea that people will be well-informed and care enough to be heard. And, you know, at the end of the day, a decision does need to be made, but the decisions that are made are of the highest quality when more people are participating and have had their point of view taken into account. Driving around, you know, it's obvious you are a wealthier community than many. You have the opportunity to have a beautiful built landscape in a place that was already naturally beautiful. It's hard not to be cheerful and optimistic when you're able to surround yourself with that. It's also, however, means that those assets are worth defending, and your culture will rally to the defense of those things. That's what I see from the outside, looking in.
Thank you. Could you comment on your, excuse me, on your understanding of the needs of an aging population?
How long can I speak? I think sometimes somebody, you look at somebody like me and you say, well, you're not that old yourself, and, you know, you have all these other credentials, what do you care about? Seniors and elders. I grew up in a household, my dad was a kitchen supervisor for a retirement home with 300 people in it from Sisters of Mercy, their provincial, and my mom was an activities director. She's still alive, she's 88, so I also have the anecdotal, personal side. So I think about seniors and their issues all the time, because the entire population of the United States are median and average. Age is going up, but it's not going to go down. Communities like Falmouth becoming even more overrepresented. There's that narrow focus, so you can talk about what is the council on aging doing? What does your senior center do? That's the narrow issue. In Douglas, we renamed it to the Adult Social Center after we had a conversation with our patrons. Said, you know, you guys aren't really coming in to do line dancing and play cribbage anymore, right? You're going to crank up the lights up because that's your generation. And this idea that we have to stereotype people who use the center because they've reached a certain age and they're only able to do certain activities is no longer true. We're living longer and we're staying active longer in our lives. So our senior centers and our outreach to seniors has to account for all of those things. I heard through the grapevine that there was a small pickleball revolution here in Falmouth. I can assure you, we have the same in Douglas. The Recreation Commission has had many meetings about who gets court time and when, but the important thing is that's an active physical activity that is really popular. So it's not the only one. As we look at the range of services we provide through our senior centers, we have to have more and more of those things included, which may mean there's a greater demand for space, a greater demand for flexibility of that space within the building. I'm no expert, I read your senior newsletter once, the most recent edition, she happens to use the same vendor that we do, so it's the same format, same format. You're doing a whole bunch of really cool stuff that we did too during COVID, but you do it on a regular basis, whether that's delivering books to people who are shut in, all the extra effort that goes into educating seniors about scams. So important now because we are all subject to increasingly sophisticated efforts to part us from our money, so we can't leave the seniors out of that dialogue. It's a good way for the police department to connect with the elderly community as well. On a broader focus, not just the senior center itself, but how we deal with seniors across the board. I often look at things through the lens of emergency management and what additional needs would any population cause or create. Let's think this through. As we have more and more people who have higher needs, our outreach effort has to be that much more aggressive, right? So if there's a power failure, how many people in town require power for some specific refrigerated medicine or for other equipment that they use because they've decided to age in place? And they're at home and they're still get around, but they need those extra things. When it's time to evacuate people, have we really thought about how long it takes to move people in a different situation? So if it takes longer to get somebody out of their house into a vehicle and out, then your evacuation plan has to be adjusted to accommodate. And you can't expect everybody to run to the car and go, because they may have a really long checklist. You don't want them to forget their medication, you don't want them to forget their equipment at home. Even just training paramedics, think about the sensitivities you need to have, because as older people get, they're presenting with any number of conditions in a very specific way that you may, if you're a younger person, poop first, are you kidding me, you called 911 because you're vomiting? Seriously, get some KLPK tape. That's not the reaction, right? The reaction is, you're an elder, you have an upset stomach, generalized weakness, you could be having a cardiac event. Be prepared mentally, the call isn't about somebody who has an upset stomach, it's about somebody who may need ALS, and there's only a limited amount of time to get it done. So that informs every single service we deliver. But I wanted to end here, any conversations about this. Seniors bring a tremendous amount of value to a community. They have a lot more time to volunteer. They have a whole life of experience to bring to various volunteer committees when they are there. And for many, they've seen that, heard that, done that. It might be just a little bit harder audience to persuade that change is necessary, but having that higher standard is good for the community, because you'll, as a government, have to live up to that challenge to convince somebody who has all this life experience about what happens to happen next isn't just another phlegm plan.
Thank you. Can you please comment on your experience making a community or workplace, et cetera, more equitable and inclusive?
So I like to think of this in terms of three major milestones that an organization has to be able to hit in order to be a great place to work for everybody. Been there, done that. First and foremost, people from every walk of life and every perspective have to feel safe. There have to be, and an organization has to be introspective enough to know where it may have places where people may not feel safe for any number of reasons, and it's the eye of the person perceiving it, not in your eye as a person presenting it. So you have to ask the questions. Do you feel safe here? Do you feel nurtured here? Is this where you want to be from a personal safety point of view? But safe isn't good enough if you want to be diverse and inclusive. You've got two more steps to go. You have to be welcoming, that's your second threshold, is that the organizational dynamic has to be that we specifically want people with different perspectives involved in everything we do, because the decisions we make affect everyone. So the only way for government to represent all the people is for all the people to have a voice and a role in executing the policy. And even welcoming isn't enough, because you still want to get to the point where people really, really want to work for you and be part of what you're doing. And so what that means is being able to post the successes, actually listen and get to the point where people feel like, not only can I work there, but I have an influence over the outcome, and I'm a valued part of that outcome. If I achieve something, I'm recognized. Those are the basic, to me, fundamental aspects of it.
Thank you. The town of Falmouth has a local comprehensive plan, and annually this select board revises a shorter-term strategic plan. Please articulate your vision for Falmouth as it aligns with those plans, and if it does not align, where does it differ and why?
So one thing that I would change right away is the point of view that's expressed in the economic development element of the comp plan. It's a third or fourth paragraph in, and it says the problem with economic development in Falmouth is that there's no political leadership behind the effort to do this. Those words are actually in a public document on your website. Not on my watch, if you appoint me, because leadership is all about paying attention to all the elements of the plan, including economic development. It's my entire background has been. It's my entire background as a municipal official is in understanding what it takes to develop an economy. So for those folks who felt that their comments were falling on deaf ears on that topic, it wouldn't be true. So that's the one part of your comp plan I would change. I would change the way people feel about it. I read both documents a couple of times. I didn't see a whole lot of internal tension. I, I saw a select board that's trying to implement the priorities of a comp plan. If I miss something, I'm happy to be corrected, but I really think there's, there's an organized effort to follow the policy directives of your legislative body and your various groups. In reading them, I felt like there were a number of fantastic opportunities. Because some, each individual element had its own goal, but most of those goals could be nested with, within one another. Significant project could knock off any number of priorities within different elements of the plan. So the next task really for municipal government in Falmouth is to find those things, find the funding and do those things. So for instance. You already have this. It's, so it's an example of what's going on, but it's an example of things that could need to continue to go on. Is mixed use development with affordable residential above that extends your wastewater infrastructure. And if you're smart about it, you should be able to leverage grants to fund a large portion of that. And change Falmouth forever and, and hit three major commercial elements, three major planning elements with one project.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. Wojcicki, I'd like to ask you, how did you prepare for this interview? Did you visit the town? If you didn't visit, why not? If you did, did you meet with anyone and what material did you review? And what can you tell me about Falmouth from your search?
Chair, I object. How many questions can you ask?
That's all one question.
I prepared by drinking hot tea and honey and it's got me to this point. Within the limitations of the time that we had from the time that the job was posted and you began your process to now, I've been to town three times. For a day, all three times. So I came once just to, to check the place out. And I hid in a corner in my cargo pants, my flannel shirt, my poop kicker boots, fed coffee obsession. And just listened to what people had to say, even as I was looking through your website and getting my bearings around town where, where the things are, where the major things are. And actually, at that point, I think that's where I made the decision that I really wanted to pursue it aggressively and not just have my name in the pot, but. You know, really prepare for this screening committee interview. So the day of the screening committee interview, I stayed after the interview was over and again drove around town, tried to get oriented. And then last Sunday. I took an entire vanload of screaming banshees out to Peabody Woods and walked around and walked around the beaches and drove around some parts of town I wasn't familiar with. So T-Ticket Hatchville, drove by the site for the new fire station, just to put a picture with the place. That's on a piece of paper. Um, I worked this like a second job. So I would get home, seven o'clock, eight o'clock at night after making myself like a PB and J or something. And sat down with, with, uh, community television and watched as much as I could. Sometimes your meetings, but sometimes just the programming that's there, whether it was farmer's market, all the affordable housing pieces. Couple of the other boards and commissions, for the most part, I read their minutes and didn't watch any videos, but. Arguably I've spent thirty, forty hours in prison.
Thank you very much.
I should say this too. To not lose sight of this fact. A big part of what I do is financial management. So I went through the budget in a fair amount of detail.
So if you thought the first question was long, wait till you hear this one.
Oh goodness. That's okay. I have to speak less. I got a break.
I'll be happy to repeat any part of this because it is really long. It's got three parts to it. Please explain the importance of attracting, developing and maintaining a professional and stable workforce that provides quality public services to the community. That's the gist of it in its three parts. Identify the elements essential to accomplishing this goal and how you would implement this in the town of Falmouth. And part B is how would you sell the costs and benefits of increased services to the public, considering the financial issues facing the town? And considering that it relies on one point six million dollars of non-recurring revenue to fund its operating expenses? And does not have a dedicated and recurring revenue source outside of debt to fund capital expenditures. And that's not all. What is the value of maintaining a competitive wage and benefit package for town employees? And how do you successfully sell this concept to the taxpayers of the community? Cause it really is one question. It's just. Long and drawn out. But you like it in writing.
That's all right. Uh, I may take things out of order, but.
Sure.
Um, so in, in about, depending how tired I am tonight, either tonight or tomorrow, be posting a compensation reform proposal for the town of Douglas on the town's website. So if you want all the details to your detailed question, there'll be forty or fifty slides there, but let me tell you. You start off by recognizing that you cannot promise people. That you will be a competitive place to work economically unless you have identified responsibly the funds to do that. So the time that I've been managing in Massachusetts, from the time that the town passed its first ever override to now. All I've been doing is marshalling the resources to be able to do comp reform. So. Yes, I mean, it's almost a mantra in Falmouth, but it's only half the equation. Yes, you must budget revenue conservatively, but that's like budgeting one O one. We all know that. It's a formula. This is what I think I want to get. I want to budget ninety percent of it. It's a formula. The hard work is on the expenditure side. You have to go through every single account and fully comprehend what the cost drivers are for that spending pattern. And what you could do about it as a municipal manager. And. I want to answer your question, but I want to turn on the jets just a little bit because this is what I do. This is my sweet spot. So this is the fastball outside half. Okay. For me. I went through every single accountant Douglas, especially those that were the most quickly growing. So what can we do to address each and every one of those sources of growth? And stop it and try to get the entire expenditure budget to equal or be slightly below the rate of growth of revenue. So all your conservative revenue estimates aside, you should be costing out your operations so that they are right about where your revenue is. And so you're almost locking in free cash as an op, as a model. I'll be really quick. I want to give some of these examples. Some of them are not that intuitive. One of the biggest growing accounts was health insurance. Multiple years of double digit year over year increases. We were too small, too small to be self insured on our own. There was no purchasing group nearby that would pull with us. So a couple of town managers and I founded a group that does something that no one in the Commonwealth, no one in New England does. We do. We are fully, we are self insured. Third party administrator system. We pull at the stop loss level. All of these things translate into. Zero, zero, zero. So you've got your Cape Cod Health Group and it's a good group, but I had to do this on my own. And the model that we're using is going to completely change the way it's done in Massachusetts. I guarantee because nobody can keep up with us. We kept, one of the big frustrations in town was the technical high school. Because it's a bill. There you go. It's X number of millions of dollars and you have no choice but to pay it. We always voted no in Douglas. The other thirteen communities would vote yes. It's kind of a charge the windmills exercise. Our new superintendent to his credit said, I can fix this. He started marketing Douglas High School to middle school students. These are your opportunities here. This is what we do well. This kid that you know, got into Harvard. This kid you know, got into Georgetown. This kid you know. There's all these other opportunities. You don't have to go to B V T. You can stay right here. Enrollment in B V T has been going like this. So this major, we, we had over a hundred kids coming to B V T. We only have a hundred kids graduating class. Right? So stop the bleeding. But it goes all the way down to procurement and having the business savvy to make good decisions around procurement. A limited budget, right? Ambulances breaking down the side of the street with patients in the back, needed ambulances. Town meeting said, this is how much money we'll give you if you buy an ambulance. Losses I have to go out and forbid, and my bids may come back. Too high. We all know the ambulance industry has only three or four players in it. So I said, you know what the heck with this? We're not going to do an invitation forbid. We're going to do a request for proposal. I said, I want to take into consideration factors other than price. So we had the union and the chief designed the ideal ambulance. The things they had to have as minimum and then all the things they wanted to add on. I went to the industry with an RFP and said, I have two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for an ambulance. Build me the best ambulance you can for that price. Deliver it as quickly as possible. Give me a good warranty and you'll win the bid. So I bought two ambulances for one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Rather than be victim of the price. All the way down to my school business manager to this day wants to shoot me over this, but I went through all of the spending on office supplies and copy paper and everything else. It turns out that everybody plays a game. They all know that the only thing you're looking at is copy paper. So you give them the bid because you have the best copy paper price, right? So the French River Educational Collaborative splits these things up. Douglas schools are buying three contracts. So was the town buying our own. But Frack had the best price for copy papers ridiculously low because the vendor artificially made the price low to win the bid. So now what we do in Douglas is we buy copy paper from Frack and we buy everything else from W B Mason online for a price far lower than Frack gets. You don't think that matters? That was ten thousand dollars, almost twelve thousand dollars of saving every year was ten percent. On that activity code. You have to be relentless. Now it's getting back to it. So now we've identified resources that are available for comp reform. I would not do here what I've done in Douglas. What I've done in Douglas is I did it myself with four other people from my staff. I will tell you why I picked them. So my finance director, my treasurer collector, assistant treasurer, who does a lot of H R and payroll administration, the executive assistant to the board and to me, the five of us. I'm the least experienced person there with Douglas. Everybody else has ten, fifteen years with the town. Actually, those people have fifteen years. Those people had the most insight into the organization as a whole and could be fair. We went through every single job description, made sure that it was accurate. And that people were, duties were reflected in their positions. Then we did an internal check because there are anomalies that arise in an organization because of the most recent hire. So if you think about this, the person who's worked for you for ten years has been loyal, maybe getting whatever step you provide. But then you go out and you have to hire someone in another function with a very similar job, but you have to go out into today's market. You may end up paying that person fifty percent more than the person who's been loyal to you for ten years because you haven't made that adjustment. You have to do that internal analysis to know what's going on inside your own organization. Next step, benchmark to external metrics, right? So in our case, we're going to look at Sutton and Munson and Rutland and all the towns that are about the same size as us. A consultant would do this for Falmouth, right? We would collect the target set of communities, obviously be heavily weighted towards the Cape because you have specific dynamics. Labor market in the Cape. But you want to see where you, where you line up, where your benchmark lines up. And my recommendation is look at the step structure. So you said that entry level salary should be competitive, but then what does your step structure look like? Douglas for years had a merit based system. Ten steps, wasn't tied to how long you worked there. It was administered by a personnel board that went out the door when the special act that created my position was created. Nobody did an evaluation for years. You can't talk about compensation with employees if you don't evaluate their performance. You have to give them a chance to talk about all the things they've accomplished for you.
Appreciate the depth of your answer, but we're gonna have to be careful because we've got a lot of questions.
Yeah, all right. So long story short, that's what my plan looks like. And it fits within the balanced budget.
Thank you. Let's see. The last thing I have for you is describe your method of developing a cooperative team approach among town employees. And please explain how you do this with the department heads as well as the rank and file.
Thank you for that question because it actually is the part of your earlier question I didn't get to, but wanted to. So it's. I think there are three major components to running a really great organization in a modern context. High standards, a culture of learning and a culture of collaboration. If you think how those three things are, three things are so tightly meshed together. Because you will make fewer mistakes if more people are involved in the discussion. If everybody's trained up to the highest level of awareness they can have in their field, they have the best available information to contribute. But you have to have high standards and accountability to go along with it. Because it's not enough to have all that preparation that we have to execute. So that's my concise answer.
Very good. Thank you. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
Um, I hope you've been looking at the news about Falmouth and what's going on here. What do you consider to be the top three issues that face our town?
There's the ones that get the most ink and there's the ones that might be, you know, well, I'll give you a blend of those in my three. As good as the financial planning has been. I still think it needs to be better. I want to see a five year budget forecast built around all the things that you can reasonably anticipate what happened in five years so that you're prepared for them. So. I'm a little bit taken aback, I'm being very honest here by any conversation about. Because, because if this conversation happened in Douglas, there would be a cauldron of burning tar and a wheelbarrow full of feathers if I went to my town meeting and said, I have excess levy capacity, but I need an override. But then we may not spend it all at the same time. Put it in stabilization. Oh, by the way, we had a grand opportunity to fund that same project that we never took. So these pieces have to be put together into a stronger financial footing. So I've had my jets on, but I never got to the fact that you leverage everything you can in grants from outside sources. It's other people's money. Go get it. So I think there are a lot of low hanging fruit. Falmouth is not taking advantage of that. You need to. Next, it goes without saying, you're a coastal community. I live in a coastal community. I've managed a coastal community in the past. We're all dealing with a tremendous amount of interest and conversation and discussion and science about what's changing in the world and how we need to adapt to it as human beings. In, in many ways, some of the most important arguments, most fundamental arguments are just starting to rise. And haven't really been pulled together into some sort of. Mutually reinforcing idea of what the truth is. Or even an actionable strategic map. So let's say. Yes, it makes sense to say, why would we spend money on something that's just going to get wrecked all the time anyway? Right? In Westport, we talked about this is the, we have a breakwater that runs from the mainland out to Gooseberry Island. This thing, Father Neptune hates this thing, right? It's constantly pounding this thing. And then wave action comes back into East Beach. East Beach is wiped out every time there's any storm with forty miles an hour winds, we lose East, East Beach road. At the same time, there are vital assets to the town that need to be defended as part of any part of adaptation to climate change and coastal resilience. They should be prioritized. So there's a lot of steps in the analysis that need to go forward. So financial planning, planning for your environment. And I think, you know, I look at these things all the time and say, what's the most disruptive proposal that's out there and how you're dealing with it? Clearly the most disruptive proposal that's been made so far is where to make landfall with cables from wind power. Clearly, the most disruptive proposal that's been made so far is where to make landfill with cables from wind power. And those things motivate more people than many others because they see their personal property, their investments, their, may have waited for twenty years to finally retire at Falmouth after working in Boston all these years. They finally get here for a couple of years and then somebody says, come and tear up the green space to be able to accommodate something. At the same time, we all have to live with the realities of the world we live in. In a Douglas, our issue isn't windmills, it's solar. The town is a forest, when every time we put in a hundred acres of solar, we're cutting down a hundred acres of trees. And it's a really jarring thing and it makes people really sad sometimes to see these things happen. But as the solar developer will tell you, they can power more homes and save more carbon with that field development that they, those trees would do in a dozen, twenty years. So this conversation needs, again, needs to be advanced based upon what you can prove to be true. But you also have to listen to people and try to balance their legitimate concerns and interests and worries with what they need to have. And ultimately, you know, this is the curse of having a lifetime as a moderate, right? The right answer is often in the middle. And it's the hardest place to be because people from both sides are shooting at you. But in many cases, we may not have a choice. Something or the planet is going to, somebody or something is going to make the choice for us. The best thing to do is to be prepared.
Next, um, how do you motivate employees to achieve more and to suggest innovative ways to perform routine day-to-day operations? And how do you build morale to motivate employees?
You have to recognize achievement. Every single time it happens consistently, uniformly. So it is common, if you scroll through select board meetings in Douglas, we had a good save. Paramedics came, saved somebody's life in a terrible traffic accident. And the next time we have the opportunity to call that out, everybody's in the audience. The civilians who helped, the medics, the police officers who responded and they're called up by name and recognized for their outstanding service to the town. We do that across the board. We haven't been as aggressive as I want to be, we should be doing that for financial things too. So when somebody says, this is a really innovative, cool way to save things, uh, save money, that's, that's a similar type of achievement. I've made a huge commitment to draining. So it goes hand in hand, right? So we believe in you, we believe that you're smart enough and excited enough about your job to want to invest yourself to learn how to do it better. Then when you do it well, you get recognized. But without the training, you're just setting people up to fail, right? You can't have standards up here and no training. So our budget has changed over time. We're providing more and more incentives for people to get advanced degrees, but more importantly certifications in their field of expertise. So if you only require an OSHA ten card for your job, we want to give you a stipend or an extra incentive for getting your OSHA forty. You're going to be a better employee if you do that. I can go on and on, but I think that's, I think you get the gist of the answer.
Thank you. Uh, explain how honest communications honor and integrity relate to developing quality working relationships with the public, committees and town employees. Provide an example for each of these constituencies in which your honesty and integrity may have hurt or embarrassed you in the short term and how you repair it.
Wow. That's a very thoughtful question. When somebody reaches the point in municipal management career that I've reached and my peers have reached, I'm sure the other two gentlemen. The only thing that matters is our honesty and our integrity. As long as nobody says I lied to you, even if you disagree with me and want me gone, I want to get the next gig. Because you can't hold me at fault because they told you the truth. Maybe you can locally, but the marketplace in general has been to admire it and respect it for what it is. There is absolutely no substitute whatsoever for being transparent. If you don't know something, say, I don't know. If it's a controversial issue, tell people where you found the information so they can check it out themselves. Don't just assert that some expert said it. And always be willing to change direction if the facts point you in that direction. Don't become so deeply wedded to a course of action that you feel like anything that's a change is a criticism of your performance to that point. It's completely inappropriate. So, you know, to no small extent, I feel like I've built my career going after some really scurrilous things that have happened in different places. It took, it takes a certain kind of person with a certain kind of background to have the backbone to do that. I had absolutely no interest at all in being part of the way things work in Rhode Island when I worked for the governor. No interest at all. We, we were brought into office to change the way the place worked for the better. It was going to make a lot of people really uncomfortable. So I picked up the financial reports for the central landfill and noticed that we were chewing up landfill space way faster than we were taking in revenue. Clearly something was wrong, right? Somebody had to say something about what was going on because it was one of the most important assets of the state was being wasted by the people running it. So I had a face-to-face conversation with the governor. I said, do you have a problem at the landfill? Let me go, turn me loose, let me turn over all the rocks and find all the jerks that are stealing all this money. And you find that one whistleblower who has the facts, the clerk of the works usually, right? The clerk of the works, person who knows every project. Says, why don't you go through all the change orders for all the construction projects, go through all of the compaction rates for each day's tip? And see if the amount of revenue gathered at the scale house is even close to what you know you tipped and compacted. I'm going to tell you, there are a lot of people that really are upset with me for doing that. I'm not going to tell you what they said to me, this is rated G, right? I can't. But there are a lot of people who saw their way of doing things being called to carpet. But if I had the courage to do that, I have the courage to do that just about anywhere else, I'll tell you that much.
What have you learned about this current select board? And what do you think will be your biggest challenges working with this board? And the third part of this is how do you facilitate when the board finds itself in conflict amongst its members?
Watching the boards' meetings is one of the reasons why I applied. Watching them in a coffee obsession. Because what I'm looking for, I have had plenty of experiences with a really difficult governing board. And I've also had my most recent experience the last six years with one of the best boards I could ever, if I could have put it together myself, as a Christmas list, I would have put it together that way. A really well-rounded board has lots of different points of view, not just one or two major points of view, but lots of different perspectives. Because everybody can benefit from other people's experience and insight. So that's what you have. A former school superintendent, a builder, somebody who works a number of different industries. Law enforcement, my brother works Vidicus, I won't hold it against you, he worked for Makepeace.
He sold to a Canadian.
You know, Angela, is there insights? Unfortunately, someone Patterson's leaving, but he's a physicist, right? So there's all of this depth in each and one of your members. And personally, I think somebody with my skill set would have the most chance to really be successful in my job, working with people like you. And that's why my decision's here. I don't feel like I know enough to truly say I know how you work together, all five of you. I mean, I can see your public persona. I know for a fact that for most board operations, there's a lot of conversation that goes on. Not in violation of the Open Meetings Act, God forbid, but there are interpersonal relationships, many of you may have known each other for a long time and worked together on different projects. Or on the opposite side, maybe you have history. To be really well informed as a town manager, you need to learn those things and know where the minds are and not tweak people's sore points. Try to get people to leave those things behind if they can be left behind. In my interviews with a couple of you, I talked about how we would resolve significant disputes in my business consulting career. Because anybody who thinks a corporate boardroom is all peace, joy and happiness has probably never been in a corporate boardroom meeting ever. A lot of times, sales has one point of view, engineering has a completely different point of view, the financial people are usually a pain in the neck because they have obstacles to everything you want to do. At some point, all of those people have to agree on how the shareholders' money is going to be spent on some huge project. And its opportunity cost is all the things you're not going to spend it on, it's a huge choice. We used to sell a project upfront and I was very much involved with some of our clients. It was called strategic choice structuring. We have to have a conversation about everyone being honest with each other, about where they're coming from and why, what their assumptions might be, what part of their worldview is implicated by a specific choice the town faces. And how would those assumptions play into the way you filter the information you're given about a specific thing? And usually when people are willing to share with each other how they've arrived at their position and what it is they've deemed is important, you can start asking really beneficial questions. About what is it that we can prove? What is it, is it that all five of you would believe despite your different perspectives, if it could be shown to be true? Or what is the most viable way to compromise? Because at some point, there may be a conflict, but there isn't going to be a resolution, there is going to be consensus, but there is a solution where everybody can live with it. So yes, it was part of my business consulting career, but I did. Also, go to those behind the scenes meetings with the U S Senator. They'll tell you, back in the good old days when it actually worked, that was how things got done. People from both sides of the aisle would talk about what was truly important to them and found a way to live with each other's solution.
Thank you. And how would you work to build consensus among the board, employees and citizens?
I think it's everything, right? Soup to nuts. First, by being accessible, being someone, being a trusted advisor means first and foremost that people feel comfortable talking to you because you will A, listen. And secondly, engage actively, so by asking questions about what the things they believed in. They feel like they're being heard, not just listened to. It's a famous quote from the U S Supreme Court, I think it was Justice Potter Stewart. I may have been through a good marshal, but it was all public hearings. Yeah, I have to have a hearing, but I don't have to listen to a thing you say. But the town manager can't afford to be that way. You have to hear everybody. The highest quality information is where you come to the final decision-making board, and that's you. As the chief policymaking, chief executive officer of the town, collectively the five of you, you have to have the best possible information. You've already built part of the structure to guarantee that you get that by having these committees that are paralleling the different executive functions of town, the day-to-day management. Perhaps, I've been told, those relationships need to be closer and more fruitful. So that town department heads and employees are talking more effectively with the committees that are assigned to their same issues. Then all the, that information needs to come to you in a timely and concise manner, in an actionable format. There's a time and a place where we might want to brief a board and say, look, this is going to be a really complicated decision. This is what I did with Compreform in Douglas. I've had, three or four times I've been on the agenda, no votes tonight, but I've made a lot of progress on the project. This is where my head is at. Please weigh in if you don't think it's the right way to go. And they have a few days to think about it, they don't have to make the decision right off the spot. Getting your information to you in a timely way is actually really important. That packet has to be complete so you have a chance to read it and ask questions. Um, but by the time it gets to you, there should be a recommendation supported by analysis, factual information and identification of options, pros and cons of options. It's not the town manager's job to sort that out, it's your job to sort that out, to the extent that I can be a resource and find things out that you need to know. All that should be taken care of.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, I have one.
Okay. I'll start with Mr. Patterson, Mr. Brown.
Um, you're certainly familiar with how the state sort of regulates the relationship between school departments and the rest of the town and how it operates. Um, you know, what, your funding of course becomes an issue and here in Falmouth, you know, we, more than fifty percent of the, of the school department budget comes out of, you know, real estate revenues and other resources, other revenue sources that come to the town first. How do you view managing that relationship between, you know, a superintendent that's in charge solely with the operations of the school department, you know, and then the town side where the, you know, select board along with the town manager are trying to manage the budget, right? And the balance of the responsibilities within the town.
It hasn't always been rosy, but I think I've gotten there. From my perspective anyway. There's municipal day-to-day government and the school department in, in many ways were viewed as co-equals or co-travelers. But that's not really the construct. The construct is there's this bigger idea, the town. And the school department is just a department of the town and its entire welfare. All of the revenues that it raises and all of the spending it does. So while it is true that there's tremendous amount of autonomy on the part of the schools, there's places where there isn't. And I think you're in a different, very different position in Falmouth than I am in the town where I'm at. You have a town meeting that's very willing to support annual increases in the budget to support the school system. And that is a beautiful place to be. Can you imagine a former superintendent, Madam Chair, I mean, if I went to you and said you've got one point seven percent, because that's our revenue growth, you'd go. I don't think that would fly in Falmouth, unless we try to make it work, right? But in my relationship with the new superintendent, we've come to a number of understandings about how we want to work together. And I've said, I'm willing to put as much free cash towards your capital needs as I reasonably can. To the same proportion that your budget draws from the operating budget. Want to push capital, I haven't said it in those exact terms, but it's actually if you follow the dollars, that's what we've been doing. So a lot of major assets, phone system, security, additional access road that we're putting in for additional security on the campus. All of those things are coming out of the town side to support his operations so he can focus on education and the kids. In return for that, please don't dismiss my ideas about how to save money without really thinking through it. So we hired a consultant at the town's expense to review all the bus routes and potential efficiencies. We found out of our ten routes, we could easily eliminate three of them and still pick up all the kids. It didn't stop there, there was a dialogue about how long is a kid going to be on the bus and all of the other parameters of the school system needed to take into consideration. And when it was all was said and done, we only eliminated one of those three routes. We still saved a lot of money. And he, as far as I was concerned, whatever you help me save, you can keep. Right? So you ask, somebody asked me already, how many times you meet with different departments? I would say superintendent, talking to each other two or three times a week. Everything from minutia to grand strategy.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, Mr. Wojcik, would you be asking us to waive the residence requirement? I know Westport's not the end of the world, but a lot of people have commented during our, uh, public process that residency is important. We've had to waive it a lot for a lot of department heads just out of basic necessity because it's a very expensive place to live. But with the town manager, I think it's important. What do you think about that?
I, um, I recognize why it's important to people because the arguments they're making. I, um, I recognize why it's important to people because the arguments they're making are powerful arguments, right? Participate in the community, live with the ramifications of decisions that people make. That's a sense of fairness. Fundamentally, that's what that's about. And being able to pull in the same direction. And at the same time, there are some basic core realities. This is a profession. I'm going to take the energy and commitment into the job no matter where I am. So I'm not a resident of Douglas. I think I've done a fantastic job for the people. I don't let the distance become any reason for me not to be in town when I should be. We had a tornado. So my phone rang, believe it or not, an EF1 tornado in Douglas, what are the chances, right?
We've had them here.
Get to work, go to the scene, be part of recovery, don't go home until everybody has a place to sleep. Make sure Mima's Johnny on the spot. That's a commitment to the people. It didn't matter where I was living. So what I want to promise is that I'm going to continue to do what I've done, which is I watch the listings, I look at what the opportunities are here. And I would only ask that the board be open-minded to my situation as well. Because I am not a man of wealth. I don't have that much. I have what I have in equity in my home and not much else. And I have a very big family, so I can't, I can't move into a two-bedroom house. It's not, that's not an option for me. So there's, there's a dynamic tension there and I don't want to put an exclamation point on the affordable housing discussion because of all, people who should say that. But you're telling me a manager, candidate, right? Middle-class white guy, privilege, all the rest of it. But there's just God's honest truth, the decision may not be made by me or you, maybe made by a mortgage broker who's not going to write me a note.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Appreciate it.
Mr. Zlinski?
Uh, to piggyback off that, which you would agree that there's an ancillary benefit to living in the community that you work for and shopping in our stores and eating in our restaurants and, right, you know, services being provided to you.
No, it's a huge thing. You know, I try not to spend too much time in my office in Douglas. I try to be, I, when the streets are plowed, I drive the streets to make sure that everything's, I mean, thank God that John and Adam and the crew are so awesome, but to see if they missed anything. There are quite a few restaurant, well, there's not quite, that's a lie. There's, there are any number of restaurants on Main Street, not like Falmouth, right? Three pizza stores and eight place, uh, sit-down is five. But I try to get the rounds. You want people to see you in public, want them to be able to have a conversation with you in line for coffee. Whether you live in town or not, you have to do that. You have to, you have to have those informal conversations because they're often more valuable than the ones you have in a formal setting. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments from the board? And you have, uh, two minutes to tell us anything that we didn't get from you that you would like the board to know about you. I'm going to limit it just because I'm limiting the, uh, the, uh, interviews to an hour.
So two minutes. A lot of, a lot of points are scored in football, two minutes left. I don't have a big rousing closing speech. What I wanted to emphasize to the board is I think you've gotten to know me fairly well at this point, at least to make a first impression. I'm simultaneously a very fun guy to work with. I have a sense of humor. I keep it light. And at the same time, I have very high standards. And I, the, the force that pulls those two things together and makes it a credible presentation is that I view public service as an honor. It's an honorable profession. And the joy that I take in life is from doing a good job for the people I work for, the people who provide the resources to get the activities done. So I bring in a certain amount of joyfulness, optimism to the places where I work because I want to create a culture where people want to be there. Work together to a good end and not always so serious. The job is serious enough. The way we get lit up on Facebook is serious enough. We should be able to crack a smile once in a while.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion amongst the board, hearing none, all those in favor? I, I would ask that the board go their own ways and not have conversations about the candidate interviews this afternoon. Thank you. And we will reconvene at six thirty.
Here.